Crowd.
Okay, all right, Lemon, it's five thirty-two, let's call the meeting to order, roll call. Coral, Pennington, Cross.
That one, Andrew Frankton.
Karen, Colonel, and Daniel Bailey are present, you may stand for the. Okay, moving on to agenda approval, if there are no objections, you're approving the agenda. The agenda is approved, and we can move on to public comments. Public comments this, for this section are for non-agenda items only at this time. When we get to an agenda item that you'd like to talk about, we'll have a presentation on it, and then I'll allow for visitor participation and then board deliberation or discussion. So is there any, oh, can I get that up sheet two?
I put my name on it, not really.
Oh, no, what? You can sign up for agenda or non-agenda items on there, I just want to make sure that I have. You're the only ones on a non-agenda item or agenda. Okay. Anyone for a non-agenda item? Okay, we will move on then to a communications update.
I just want to come up with people, please.
Or do you need to?
Karen has done a ton of work, and so we haven't had a communications committee meeting or an update in a while, so we wanted to just provide some information, so you've got the executive summary, so you can see the things that we want to chat about, do you want to sit there? So, I put website versus, I want to say website. So, the three, I would say the three areas we've been focusing on, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is facilities, because of all the long-term facility planning, so she's been doing a lot of work on the facilities page. Also strategic planning, we just started some work on that page, because we're going to be still waiting for final documents, things like that with Joe, and then obviously with the focus on budgets, we've been doing some work on the budget. So I don't know if we want to, if you want to just.
I think it's kind of self-explanatory, but.
So if you go to the facilities page, you will see that we have a timeline?
You will see that I screwed it up.
No.
What? Oh, so she's gonna, she was, we had a whole bunch of stuff, and she was going to convert that into like little buttons?
Little buttons, building tour presentation, FAQ, utility planning.
Yeah, first one's different than mine, that's so weird.
Oh, okay.
But yours is right. No, yours looks. And then if you go on about, you'll notice that it used to say mission and vision, and now it says strategic plan. And so we're going to create buttons here as well, so that we'll have the equity documents, we'll have the, when Joe gives us the nice versions of the strategic plan, the mission and vision, and then eventually, when we've mapped out all the strategies and how we're going to progress on either of those and share those with the board, that'll be part of this page as well. So that you'll see the check-ins on data and the check-ins on student growth on this page as well. And then I think the other page that we might want to peek at is business and operations.
And I'm not sure how.
Yeah, is there a way to project them? Do you guys want to see what we're talking about?
But we can, we'll, once we get it.
But the person who sits in the front is always the teacher's favorite, right?
Oh, yeah, thanks. Most of the, can I ask some questions about the website? Well, let's see, hold on, okay. I, I have like a few, just a few thoughts about it, so it sounds like the dashboard's part of a long-term goal. Okay, do you have like, are you keeping like a timeline, or do you have like like action plan, agenda for like, okay, so what is it, budget's going to be updated, it's the budget page, the facility planning and, like, so is there like a, do you have like a schedule, or like, I'm going to be done with this by this time kind of deal?
No, I don't think I have a schedule, it's mostly just when I get information, then I just immediately, it depends on what comes to me and when it comes to me.
Okay.
So like with the facilities, we just had a communications meeting on Monday, last Monday, and so I've got all the, all the information that we discussed is now done and ongoing.
Okay.
And then the same thing with like budget, so Lindsay has given me kind of a guideline of some things, and when I get the information, I just do it. And then I'm still waiting on stuff, but.
I wonder if it would be helpful for you and for us to keep up with, like some kind of document that shows like, like I updated this on this date and like, or something that, like something like that, not to create more work, but I don't know, I'm just like, as a way to kind of track like how much you have done, and like what we're still looking at doing, that's just like an idea. And the thing that we've talked about for a while is like getting some kind of user ease or survey, like Tim Panikuchi talks about this when we were doing the website work, it's like you pick ten people and you say, go find this, do this, do that, and then they do it, and you see how long does it take them, because I, I think essentially, but I think we're, we still hear, I think, I mean, our website is leaps and bounds so much better, you know, than it was. But I think we still get some complaints about ease of use, and I wonder if that would be helpful information. Maybe else have anything specifically on the website, or let him move on to.
Social media, so I don't know if you want to talk about some of the things you're implementing on the, can you care for Facebook page up there or not?
That I definitely have a schedule, I follow Donovan Group, and then there's also another school website that I follow their calendars pretty strictly and highlight what I think is important for our district to promote, and whether it's, you know, obviously like days off or holidays or education week, that kind of stuff, I want to just make people aware of that. I'm trying to do something with teachers every Friday, so I'll do like a teacher quote that, that we started this year. I've had a lot of help from Kirkway and, I'll be just as she and JoJo here at Glen Hills, they've been kind of once a week giving me some information, pictures, and then writing something out, which makes it, I can schedule things out, which makes my life really easy, because I'm not, you know, I'm not in the buildings.
Yeah.
So that's been really helpful this year, and then I have utilized like the meta through the Facebook page the last year and a half, and that has been great for scheduling. So like, the end of the month, it's a, it's a thing where you can just kind of go hop from page to page, and you can schedule out your things.
Oh, okay.
So the end of every month, I sit down and I plan out what I'm going to do, and I spend that week just mapping out the whole next thing, and I just, you know, there might be a day off in three weeks, and, but I get it out there, so I don't forget about it. So that one, I, I think I definitely have more to handle on it, because it's a little bit more just me.
And then one of the nice things too is we met with the mayor to fill him in on like facilities work and what we're doing, and he hooked us up with Nextdoor app. Because apparently a business can be a member on Nextdoor app.
And we all know when coyotes are on the ground.
But he did say it's like four thousand households or something, so he thought that would come in really handy for sharing things over.
Nextdoor politics and etiquette, maybe if we want to.
Moderator, right?
Talk to me or Kennedy though.
No, yeah, he's the one that gave us the tip, yeah.
Okay.
And he shared some of our, like our videos and stuff on there for us before we were approved, which was in our last meeting, he shared. But that's a lot of households that don't have.
Are meeting?
District, like. Oh, I was listening session, facilities, so. Okay, no, but that's just a lot of households we can reach that we can't reach through, just our draft.
That's cool.
Yeah, I've been noticing the fun Facebook posts, it's nice.
Emergency operations plan, that's something that we worked on earlier this year, went through a couple iterations, a couple drafts. Started with a template from Nicolay, and then worked with the administrative team to really make it ours. We also have ring binders that we created that have, for staff, that are on a ring that'll go in a go-bag. So then it'll have a quick reference to like, this is an evacuation, this is a craze drill, this is just a different drill, so we're working on stuffing those bags for classrooms. Obviously, that was under exact content, because we don't have to probably know our emergency plan. And then you'll also see our emergency team on there, so everybody's assigned different roles and responsibilities should there be an emergency, so just wanted to share that.
This was in conjunction with the police department, right, and all the, like the.
And then the state principals are looking probably February to do a craze drill. And we would do that just like we did last year, where it's really just walking conversations, walking through conversations with students, like, so there was, if there were an announcement that said there were an intruder by the comments, could we get out? Which way would we go? If we can't get out, what could we use to bear people, or like, just having conversations about it, so not really doing like a drill drill, but just talking through those pieces, and then we talked about in the spring, perhaps having an opportunity to walk over to our evacuation site, just so that everybody's kind of like done that walk and knows where it is. Because if you're about to do an emergency, you kind of want to just remember, just, you've done it before, go. But we're thinking we'll do that in spring, and then the police department does support when we do the drill, they just go over and talk to the police department, ask them, answer questions.
Can I, I would wonder if calling it a drill, I wonder if there's a different way to talk about it, because I think a lot of people, or at least those of us who've been in schools, lived through the era of the drill where people were pounding on doors, and though that was something that was going to be super helpful and not just really scary.
Yeah.
And traumatizing.
True.
Um, and so I wonder if there's a, a different terminology to use that would better describe what we're doing, which is rehearsing, right, we're rehearsing in a
Practice.
Practice.
Just a weird acronym.
Oh, I know, I mean, it is what it is, but, yeah, I had, I mean, it is what it is, but I had the same thought, I was like, ooh, it's an unfortunate acronym. But I do appreciate that we're no longer traumatizing our students and trying to help them understand how we can protect them.
Yeah, so yeah, that's a good idea, we have a script too that we use, so that everybody's like, like, you know, would get on, it's okay, at this point, we're going to talk about da-da-da-da-da. And get off, and then the conversation's classroom, so yeah, so yeah, that's really good.
I have one. Okay, we went to something at the education convention last year, but one piece I'm thinking about is like, I know you can't share this with the public, but what do we share out with community and families? And how do we do that, like what, do they need to know, or what should they know, so that like, I mean, if our kids are prepared and they understand, but then maybe, maybe they go home and they're like, we did this, you know, like.
So your team, we shared communication out, so we sent something home to all families, saying, this is what we're going to practice today. And like, we walked through how that's going to work, and then we let them know a day that's going to happen, so I mean.
Is that an email? Kind of, I mean, just like in general, like proactive and maybe consistent, like, even if it's part of a handbook you sign or I don't know, I was thinking about. Yeah, like, we regularly do these things, and we will send out communications before.
Just like a general.
I, I don't know, there's probably, I think there's best practices, and there's a group out there that like, that does this work, and I can't think.
It's associated with, it's someone associated with.
I love you, it's a, yes.
It's the I love you group.
Yes, because it was, yeah, so that group has like templates, tons of kinds of things we could use.
And then the other thing, your question is, can you think about is, and Helen's here, so she might have a better sense of what pre-work you're doing for kids who might have challenges around anxiety. And like a threat response, you know, to these kinds of drills, whether they're grabbing for it, or minimizing impact, or handling it different for kids who might have a strong anxiety response or trauma response.
A student or two who would like, practice drills are, are written in the IUD that sometimes we just can't talk through it with them, but they're not even listening. That's a big concern for students.
Yeah.
And it feels like, sorry, it feels like that's more like how we did it before than with our kids, and it was literally like you got on and said, this is a lockdown.
Right.
But just having classroom conversations for the one of these years, it's not as.
Yeah.
But yeah, still something.
Okay, thank you.
The only other two things is, I just, just a sharing, that Karen and I signed up for some professional learning this year. But I'm through the Donovan Group and WASDA and WSPRA, which is like the school communication network for this year. And it's just sessions that we attend together every month that share different types of communication tips. And so you can see the session dates, times, and topics on the document I shared in Board Docs, but it bases, the first one was basics of school communication, planning, working with the media, social media, crisis communication, so that'll probably help with some of what you were just asking about, we didn't do that one yet. Video best practices, marketing and branding, internal and then special topics, so it's been nice, they also record them, so if we can't watch it together at the same time, we'll wait. We wait and schedule the time to watch it together, the recording later, and then they send materials and resources, so it's been really nice, and it was highly recommended that it's your district communication person and your superintendent, and they do it together. So one of them is actually at the campus, so Karen will come over into a session. That's that, it was just a informational. And then the board calendar. So we continue to plow ahead on that, and so I just wanted to share the latest iteration based on templates that Danielle shared with me, and so obviously still room to tweak or move things or add things, I took the items from the budget calendar, which we will actually talk about the next meeting, but they would also be populated with them, this overall board calendar.
Are we looking to, I mean, we would approve this, a board action would approve it, so, do we want to like have a deadline for ourselves?
Sure, or, yeah.
To approve the talent.
You guys, yeah, I think you, because I think you would do it every year. Right, so that it would be top of everybody's like.
Give us the heads up on what's coming.
I think so, yeah, so I would, I think other districts that have these, they approve them, same as they approve the budget calendars. Um, I think it's so pretty, thanks for putting, for making that.
For color coding.
It's rainbow. I love it. Um, yeah, I had some, I have some like, simple things, I think, but to add, but does anybody have any comments about the board calendar?
I have looked at it, are you thinking it would be on the next?
I don't think we have to rush it, but I would say, how about you guys look at it, and if you see something missing, or you want, you know, questions, let's give ourselves, till maybe the January calendar, to regis, to come back to it in a month?
I wouldn't know what needs to be on it, honestly, what would we have to know what needs to be on it?
I think almost, I mean, I think a lot is already out there, so.
So can you bring it back on the phone here?
Sure. Okay, why wait, let's do this one, let's do it in two weeks, okay.
Sure, I mean, you could throw it up there, just so everybody knows what we're talking about.
I kind of like disconnect.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I, so this is what we're talking about. One of the main questions I have is like, so the policy review and policy approval, I know we're using Neola, but I wonder if there are specific policies we want to like ID so they stay on our radar that we might be able to figure out, and then.
Specific series, right, like?
Yeah, like a series or like, because like they'll come, well, like, yeah, so. Things every six, or every year, every six months?
Yeah, I think it's every six months, but even to what you're saying, so let's say it was approved next week, then I could go in and go, okay, I'm working on the ones that, one thousands and the two thousands next, and I could put that specifically in.
Yeah, I think so, so we can see what's coming and then keep, keep revisiting.
So if we do this, keep this as a Google Doc, I could, you know what I mean, adjust and add things to be more specific.
Yeah, and I just, I was thinking of ways we could put more like data touches and strategic plan touches in there.
Yeah, kind of waiting time to renew, it's only eleven, but yes, because we'll have mapped out.
But I think that there should probably be more touches of like student data throughout, instead of just winter and certain. And new board member orientation, I'll email you all these things, order tree. You have like a proof onboarding materials, but we actually need to like onboard people. I'm looking for. Okay. Okay, cool. Nothing else on that?
Nope.
Anybody, anybody? I'm going to move on to finance.
Take a break today.
You don't, you don't, um, okay, so Lindsay is not here, she is very sick, she feels very bad about it, but it's not her fault that she's sick, and so Alison, who's worked with her on this, and will be able to present to us the presentation, and if there are things Alison can't answer, we'll sort of mark it as a follow-up for the board meeting, for Cal, or enough, or enough, or enough. And just as a reminder, this is something that we as a board asked for, a walkthrough of our twenty-two, twenty-three budget to understand how our spending, how we overspent our budget, right?
Yep.
Is that good?
It's a good lead-in?
Yes.
All right, so I'm just going to walk through, and then I'll stop, I'll pause, and you guys just.
Yeah, that's good.
So we can do. Work a lot. Thank you. All right, so the first slide is just the big overview, so you've got Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-seven together, budget and actual, so as you all know, we budgeted last year the nineteen million, and then we ended up spending the twenty-three, which we talked about at the last budget. So then the way that she broke down the next several slides is to just like dig a little bit into the major categories. And then within those categories, after showing what we overspent, give some of the bigger reasons why there was overspend in those areas. So the first category is salaries. So if we look at special ed salaries, the budgeted amount was the two million. We came in at twenty, the two point two eight one eight, and so that was an overspend of about two hundred and six thousand in that area, the breakdown, when she was, we talked a lot about adding additional paraprofessionals. So you can see that the budgeted amount for paras, and then the actual spend was the vast majority of that two hundred and six, and then there were some pieces around just how many students we had to put through initial evaluation and the costs associated with that. So like school psych time, or speech pathologist, or time for the staff members actually doing evaluations. So that was that extra thirty-five, but you can see the majority of that was on paraprofessions.
Now I just get a point of clarification.
Yep.
So the additional thirty-five nine, is that time that's paid in over and above the typical work rate?
I think so, is that what you shared with Lindsay, like summer evals and like extra time?
Not, there were like special education teachers that don't have extra days in their contract that we had to pay for some of those evaluations, but then also there are some services that we have a contract for evaluations, so that would be through vision services, orientation mobility services, deaf and hearing services, audiology services, we did have some initial evaluation, where we had a contract out for that through an outside agency or.
So the attribution of school psych and speech might not be quite.
Accurate, I didn't see that.
So there wasn't any additional time over the summer for like school psych or?
The school sites had, had days and have extra days in their contract. So, and they, and they were, I mean, at best, we'll say, and they're proud right now, but she was, she completed those evaluations, but then those extra we have to pay. But the special education teachers that are on those teams don't have extra days in their contract, or does the old team, or PTs, so they need to be, need to do those evaluations, and they, a lot of times, she needs to cover.
So I'm changing to that right now, sure. And I, so the thirty-six K initial evaluation services needed, is that, that's thirty-six over what she budgeted? Do we know what she budgeted, or what historically?
She's including, she's including that in salaries, so if you look at the salaries, you're at two oh six eight seven two seven. Only one seventy eight eighty-nine was paraprofessionals, so the.
No, I understand that, but does she not budget for initial evaluation services?
She, all of it together, it's budgeted together.
In that paraprofession.
For that two million seven, so basically what she's saying is, I budgeted two million for special ed, all of it.
So of that two million, how much?
I overspent.
How much did she budget for initial evaluation services within that two million?
I don't know if she breaks it down, then.
So Danielle, it sounds like what happened is there were extraordinary evaluation needs that included either contract, outside of contract time, that needed to be reimbursed, or contract services that are low incidence that the district doesn't employ. And those wouldn't be anticipated, because we don't know that those kids are going to come into our doors.
Well, I guess, I guess that's where my question would be then, is that, thinking about it moving forward, is like, if we have historical information about how much we've spent on evaluation services, and we know that this is like, maybe last year was extraordinary, but we had more money, I don't know, I mean, we and so maybe we know by looking at some of the population studies, or the demographics of, you know, all of that, that we're going to continue to see this trend, so I guess, I guess I'm just asking that we I, I guess that's just where my head is at, like, how do we prepare for that? Right, well, then I'm standing up on Andy.
Okay, so if you go back to the first slide, it looks like we overspent about four million dollars.
Yeah.
But if you go back, and again, this is, these are not, these are not, this is not apples to apples. Uh, yeah, but that's Fund Twenty-seven and Fund Ten, right?
No, so this is four million in overall salaries, the only slide I showed.
Overall budget.
Uh, sorry, the second slide.
And then twenty-seven, is that the?
Yeah. Yeah, so we overspent four million.
Yes.
So if you go back to, I think it's October meeting, it, we look at the ending fund balance, and that's, you know, negative one point five million. So were we anticipating a surplus for that year, like, did we, okay.
So if you look back at like, five-year projections around twenty eighteen, like from twenty eighteen, that like a different administration did, if we look at those, you'll see that somewhere around twenty-three and twenty-four, we start to, we start to project a deficit.
A deficit, yeah.
And that was not with any, that was pre-COVID, that was pre-all the things, pre-SR, pre, so it's not necessar, it's just a piece of information that like, in this part of this was, was, you could possibly forecast, but I mean, we know that in June, we were, we were forecasting a surplus, but that June preliminary budget
Right.
did not include any special ed.
So, so we were anticipating about six million then to be our ending fund balance. Because we went from four, yeah, we went from four point three to two point eight, which is, you know, minus one point five. But here, it's saying we overspent by four million, not one point five.
I'm not sure I understand your question, but maybe it's follow-up from Lindsay, if we can answer it. Sorry.
Well, and because then, well, I mean, just to go on that, and a separate question, but I mean, then we apparently are one million, I think, below our anticipated budget for this year, which was based on our expenditures for last year, so, you know, I, I think understanding, and unfortunately, Melissa's not here, but really understanding why those costs from current with this year, I mean, yeah.
That's what we're doing, we're doing that right now, we're just at the beginning of understanding the four million that we spent.
Yeah.
Right?
But according to the budget, it was one point five million.
Right, because our budget, we took one point five million out of, uh, fund.
But that doesn't mean that's all the money that we spent last year. So right now, we're going through expended.
Yeah. Cover it, so we could have had. Uh, so we could have had short term loans and some other thing too, so it could have been longer, but that would be that we had two point five million dollars worth of.
I think if you want this to be a sensible discussion, first you talk about expenses. Then you talk about revenue, if we continue to complain it, you will not make sense of it.
I'm not talking about revenue.
Well, if you're talking about the difference between. If you're talking about the change in fund balance, you're starting to talk about revenue. If we set that aside and we just look at expenses, see how did we go four million over? We could first understand the expense side. And then we could look at revenue, they don't happen together. Always gonna be confused.
So my question, and I, I mean, I agree with what you were saying, Karen, about uh, uh, expenses uh, from contract service and initial evaluation. So I mean, I would just ask Kelly, since you're here, did we have thirty-five thousand odd uh, increase in evaluation services?
I wouldn't be able to give you a baseline from the previous year, like I had that, I had not seen. I had not seen a budget broken down with the expense of the initial evaluations. We're gonna need. Just to be tighter with that, um, and you're right, uh, Karen, there were evaluations that came in that happened and. If there's a need and a concern, we have to. A licensed person at the table and um, some of those providers have to be very expensive.
Yeah, so we'll put that on the list for Lindsay, like, uh, just a historical. A question about the historical.
I do remember a conversation at some point since I've been at the table that indicated we had a much higher incidence of special education initial evaluations last year. Than historically, which I would say is on trend with every other public.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. And if we want to talk about revenue, we can do that separately. But I'm just saying, we asked them to walk through spending, so we're gonna walk through, so, I like to Carlos, like, thank you. So we'll have Lindsay answer your question.
Okay, that was fine, thank you.
Understand, okay. So any other questions on the salaries, the Fund Twenty-seven salary slide? Alright, let's move on to Fund Ten salaries.
So budgeted amount was the seven point five. Actual was the eight. So that was about a half a million. Additional in salaries, and then the breakdown. For major salary expenses was um, market value adjustments, which was two thirty-seven. There was a specific slightly confidential, seven thousand dollar. Um, insurance salary payout, which I can remind people of later if they would like. But obviously the board was part of, like, so, but I can, we can, we can be detailed, we'll go later. Um, additional FTE, so that's what we talked a lot about the last couple meetings. Or what were the additional positions that were added versus like the replacement positions? So there are two pieces to that, you've got the one ninety-two seven, which is coach. Student services, speech language, building stuff. The maximum staffing, which is a service that we used last year. Because as we all know, it's going to have their professionals and maximum, um. Sent us candidates, the nice thing about maximum is that they take care of benefits. They take care of CPI training, they take care of background checks, so there are a lot of savings for the district, um, hiring through maximum. Um, so that was about seventy-one thousand, the negative thing about maximum is because it's a contracted service, we couldn't use Fund Twenty-seven. For those positions.
Oh, but those were all. Paras who came in under.
The maximum staffing.
Under Fund Ten. And they're not our employees, right? They're contractors.
Which is also beneficial, should it not work out. Because they're. Working through the. We've got some really good. People.
Is there a non-compete buzz with them or can we hire from maximum?
Um, I had a question, I'm going to guess probably just that Lindsay will be able to. But the market value adjustments, at the time, the way she was talking about that was she might have to um, spread it out over some time. But she ended up paying it out in the second year, and I'm wondering if she did that and then it was like. Before she realized we didn't.
You know what I mean, like.
I'm just like, I'm just curious, cause you know, like some, some of these things, we got assurances from her, like, I, I, we have the money, I can find, and I know we're gonna. We're working on fixing that going forward, right, adding context and making sure we know, I'm so sorry. So I, so I know that that won't happen going forward, but I just, I'm trying to understand how. Where her judgment, yeah, what, what was going on that?
Cause I remember the conversation, um, with to meet her around, do we split it, do we do it all?
Any other questions?
A couple I'm seeing, first of all, I just wanna reiterate. My claim in anyways, uh, began me to the market value adjustments, I think really important to do that. I think that it was a, an important step equalizing a lot of this. Frankly, the inconsistent uh, compensation uh, that this board has become aware of over time. And so, I think that bunch of consequences for that, regardless of. I mean, how it ultimately gets paid out, I probably would have still voted in favor of doing that. Even knowing that with budget impact, I mean. I just wanna make it clear, that was a very important thing for us to do, there's something that, you know, I think it's worth it to commit to and, and, and that was. Something that we've been talking about for several years on our board, so that was a really important thing. I'm, I was wondering if you could speak just a little bit to the hundred ninety-two thousand. As, uh, and just to refresh, uh, my, what does SST and SLP stand for?
Oh, I'm sorry, so we added a counselor, so student services team. So the counselor and then speech, um, schools, an additional school site, so they would both be.
That says SLP is a school.
Two counselors, right?
That would be student services team and then the speech language.
The uh, coach, what was that, was that a?
So we're actually thinking we're gonna change the name so that it's more obvious what. What the role is, so those are the. Coach slash interventionist, so really they're like a reading specialist or a math specialist, they either work with adults and they work with students. I know, to do intervention, but essentially they have the reading license or math license, so they're specialists. So they can train adults and they can do tier three intervention with students.
I guess I have the same question, well, it's a question for, I'm guessing Lindsay then, and just in thinking about. Like, if this is part of the overage, this is what she's identifying as where we overspent. When we made these choices to approve these things, like, we weren't talking about that. We weren't talking about, we don't, we don't, there's not really money for this, but we need to do this, so how are we gonna do it?
Because I don't think at the time, I'm not sure she.
Like, at what point in time was she like? Crap, I, or you know what I mean, like, at what point in time did we, what?
I, no, I agree with you.
Oh, I thought you said you know. At what point in time?
I don't know.
See, because jumping to.
Because she said she bases her projections on three year.
Yeah, I know she has some, I, I, she's not here, so I don't. I don't, I'm not trying to.
No, I hear what you're saying.
Negative, and I know she talked about how her projections maybe didn't serve her as well as she wished they had.
So you figure we came in after two, like, long years, right?
Yeah, yeah, and she didn't have a lot of historical necessarily, but I mean, that's like, so. When you see it put this way, it's like, well, here we are as a board approving things that apparently we didn't have money for, and we should have. Known how we were gonna balance that.
So my understanding is, is that when we add staff, and, and we add, first of all, the things that are unforeseeable. And unforeseen, then there's the foreseeable, um, and generally speaking, when we add a teacher, we add a, a role. There's an understanding, I think, that we're gonna be operating within, you know, those budget norms and having that. You know, extra question going forward about, you know, budget impact that's unforeseen is important. But I also think that this is just kind of a, a point where we can say, look. Uh, this may have been a priority, this may be something that, you know, we're gonna go to. Is there a way to kind of examine those priorities in the planning like we're talking about? So that, you know, we can say, look, you know, next year, we think we want to add, you know, position X. This is how we're gonna plan for it, um, and, and just to kinda, you know. And frankly. I think that there are a lot of things that we had to do, there are a lot of things that we wanted to do, there, um. You can't always, you know, plan it out and implement it over, you know, a set and schedule. Um, I think that, uh, when you do everything at once, this, when, you know, you get some of those, uh. And challenges, so I just would love to, you know, kind of generally. Try to find a way to say, hey, look, you know, these are the staffing positions that we think that we're gonna need over the next three years or five years, whatever it is. And, uh, you know, this is our plan for implementing those in, uh, and, and how that budget's.
We will, because it's on the budget calendar, so there, there will be accountability around staffing projections, around forecasting, and all of that.
Are we, I, I think we also talked about a practice of. When you bring forward a proposal of an expenditure, it also includes the financial impact and projecting forwards that we have like the whole picture.
Yeah, exactly, and we'll have that dashboard, which is also gonna just give us a moment in time where we're at.
The gas tank, that's, yeah, right, that's what I call it.
Any other questions? Moving along, we should have a summary slide.
Yep, so this is just. Transportation, so that was another big area, and so then she provided a breakdown for that. So, and she also included this graph, just so you can see some of that historical. Um, data and just how. And change, like decently significantly, so using that three-year trend and projecting out. I mean, she even went out more, right, than what she would have, if you look at the six forty-four, the five forty, and the. Four nineteen, so she projected, you know, the seven forty-nine, and it was still under, so.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Oh, no, I apologize, I was looking at the top, it's the bottom, so like, one million, then nine five, then six eighty-four, which was COVID year. Then one point two, which was last.
So then how did we go from one point two to?
That's what I'm trying to. Budgeted so low after a one point four million in transportation the year before.
It seems to me that if we had accounted for that. Some of our other choices.
But if you look at the regular busing, only the yellow line.
It went down.
You know what I, so I'm sure that could have been some of.
Which you can actually project.
Because you can't project, what we're gonna, can't necessarily get a straight answer on what we're gonna pay for private. How many K four kits are gonna use the bus, field trips, special education.
Yeah, but most of those aren't that far. But it's like, I don't know if it, if it matters now, but like. It's now something to keep our eye on, it's like, what are we budgeting for transportation? In the historical context, because.
Yeah, cause those are pretty similar to uh, twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh, expenses, so like private K four, parent field trip, the only ones that are. The two years of COVID.
I've heard Lindsay talk about sped transportation costs being remarkably. They don't. I mean, they are higher than last year, but not. Right, budget breaking.
I guess that is the one that did go up since twenty eighteen though. Oh, yeah, I know from, yeah, yeah, from twenty twenty-one to twenty.
What's the private category? Private school transportation that we have to pay for?
Any, any.
For vouchers or for sped.
I don't know if there's any kid in our district that goes.
Oh, it's not just busing, we actually can pay, we can be charged for parents to transport their children. So like, if they would have. It would be cheaper for us to bus a parent, I had a deep conversation.
Not only did we give the. Lose the five hundred thousand in vouchers, but we also lost a hundred and twenty thousand. So the total cost of private school vouchers last year was six hundred and.
So the positive spin on paying the private school, like, parents to drop their kids off is we saved money because we didn't pay for a bus. Because the bus would have been more expensive.
The numbers don't stack up when you think of, I don't know how many people we vouched out, but that's.
It's any private school enrolled child, it's not just. It's not kids who would eat, it's just anybody.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I mean, I, I, I would love to just, you know, and, and if you were, I just would love to, you know, follow up with Lindsay.
We're, we keep trying to get something on the calendar.
No, go ahead.
That's just the summary, so you've got on ten and twenty-seven salaries, fun ten and twenty. And then this is kind of the fuzzy one, because, um, we just pulled off some of the bigger items, but it's just. Other expenses, so you've got your Fund Twenty-seven transfer, which is a vast majority of that. Because as you know, your Fund Twenty-seven has to be zero at the end of the year.
I would like historical data for these, I would like to.
So I don't have that one, but like for the ones that we do, would have historical data, I added, I mean, I don't personally.
No, I know you don't, I'm saying, I would like it.
We did add for some of the other ones, so like legal fees, she, well, not maybe historical, but she budgeted thirteen-four. I think like, it was lower than that the year before, I can't remember what she said it was, but we could pull that. And then the total spend was thirty-three eight. So that's that over of twenty. Um, Fund Forty-six transfer, remember that was the one that we had to redo. Because there was gonna be a transfer in the Fund Forty-six, but it wasn't approved at the board meeting. We had to like bring it back, so then it became part of last year's budget, cause it was, was not transferred the year before, so that was that two hundred thousand. Um, open enrollment, you can't really. Necessarily plan for, Wisconsin Choice Program, she budgeted three seventy-eight, it ended up coming in at five twelve. So that was a one thirty-four.
That's the private school vouchers.
Um, technology, so we're on a cycle now, but we had to do some catch up. So she had budgeted that four ninety-seven, we ended up at five fifty-seven because we had a bunch of iPads that like the five year. Expired, so we just had to catch up, but now we're on a cycle, so it won't be like a huge. Bill like that in one year, we spread out.
So the Fund Twenty-seven transfer was two and a half million over. And that's, um, so doesn't that actually make sense with your question, you said there was one point five and then there's a two point five million transfer and that's.
I think, I think.
I think that's what it is.
I think what's going on is, I have a guess, she's talking about straight up expenses. She's not talking about expenses that are offset by S R funds and offset by state aid. Because. So I think, I think that's where I was confused, so it does actually have something to do with revenue, where I think it's straight up expenses, not offset by. Which is a little confusing.
Well, then again, my, my question for then is like, she didn't budget at all, I mean, she must have budgeted for a Fund Twenty-seven.
Well, that comes from the general fund, Fun Time. But it happens every year.
Too, I mean, it was unanticipated in that, in that regard, about, about that much, that, right? So, that's. I think as we do like more board education and the budget, budgeting workshops and the, you know, the touches going. Through and how she's creating her budget assumptions, that'll be something on our radar. But I'm still, I'm still sort of trying to understand how, how that might have snuck up on her.
And it would be nice if she kind of, cause again, I'm, I'm just guessing here, I think she's doing expenses, just. Flat expenses, it would be nice to see it offset with the, with the aid or S R funds or whatever she found, because. Yeah, I, I really wanna get. I really wanna get to that one point five million unless. She was budgeting for a two million surplus. Meaning our general fund would be six. Meaning our general fund would be six million instead of ending two point eight. I don't remember from.
We won't have any resolution without Lindsay's insight, right?
Yeah, 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 true, true. It's not your fault.
Sick is sick. Alright, so, well, did you add these, the others? No, I had put it on two slides, so I could put in the other information about what was butchered and.
Various things that went over.
Oh, okay. I don't know that I saw these.
No, because remember you wanted me to add like, what was the budgeted amount?
Okay, don't worry about it. It's okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
So it's just that it was one slide before. I had to spread it out. Um, so the next one is just some other um expenses. So the maintenance repairs. Which included the boiler and the canopy, so the budgeted amount, the total spend. Um, some things that will come back to us this year. So um, the special ed van, but we're gonna be getting reimbursed some reimbursement from that, cause that's foundation.
Yeah.
General supplies, you can see the budgeted amount, the total spend. That's the piece where she talked about. Um, having a set classroom budget and budget and some of those pieces that should help reveal the project better with that. Um, edge of climate, again, also grant reimbursement will come in this year. Security cameras, grant reimbursement.
Can she lay out how much? Or just it's, I I know she gets a lot of grants and stuff that we learn when they come in, but we don't actually see how they're. They impact us, so it would be good to know that.
I'm also curious how that looks in the accounting, cause it feels, I'm not an accountant. Like when you talk about reimbursement, it's treated differently than revenue. So I don't know if when you get reimbursed, if it reduces the expenditure column, or if the grant is treated as revenue. When I'm pounding through the numbers. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
So it would be good to have clarity for me on what I'm looking at on that, cause that might be part of where we get confused.
And then um I had her add on like the strategic planning, um, our Neola contract, our Hepburn Ward. And then she's got this incremental over just throughout the budget, so I'm sure those are just things where she'd have to, she'd have to like comb through at the end. To get to those pieces. And then the next one, she just wanted to share just as an example of cost variability variability. Um, so you can just take a look at that, so. You know, you're you're projecting, um, but like even like you just look at plumbing, right? Fifty-two, one year, seven, five, the next year thirteen. So that she just wanted to give an example of some of the variability that she can come across. And some of these areas of the budget.
Snow removal looks pretty consistent.
Tough question, um, the boilers, um. It was around two thousand seventeen, replaced one of the boilers. I forget if that was at uh Parkway or in the Good Hope. One of them relatively brand new. And, you know, it looks like the cost doubled in, you know, four years.
For the water treatment.
Yeah. So, well, those are water treatments and to look at the regular boilers, those are different from the. I mean, what is?
Here and halfway.
Okay, but. I understand the different boiler and water treatment boiler. Alright, water treatment does what?
I actually have.
Cause I didn't know that we were treating water, maybe in the pool.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm sorry. Kevin's probably on.
I've never heard of a water.
Most are just a little, you know, like mechanical cost, I mean, you know, that's like two and a half times more.
Yeah, it is quite an increase.
Um, so I I I would like some more specificity on some of that, just to get into the sense and. You might be getting into like little things that maybe add up if, you know, you. Uh, you know, if you look at that, but I mean, it's a lot of little things that that add up.
Well, that's one of the things we talked about is like looking at the root causes of like, so we're gonna say some of these things have gone up. Like why have they gone up? You're saying like inflation, what, what, like, can you like get into like deeper causes so we can prepare in the future like and try to?
One thing that we used to do with some regularity when you back when was around years, you go to uh the board. With uh capital improvement list and maintenance list and you walk through that and. Excitimize, you know, everything that, he he would list the dream projects and realistic projects, both the cost.
Yeah.
Uh, and potential budget impact. Um, so, you know.
I mean, we've got the list, right?
Yeah, Lindsay would have to.
But I mean, we've got the information, so something you could do.
So real quick, I have to take back what I said, because I'm pretty sure state aid only reduces the bill rate. It doesn't impact your uh revenue, so it only impacts the tax.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like we're.
So the.
Water needs to be treated for the boilers, yes, for trans.
I I like the idea as we explore expenses, cause I think we're gonna have to be more careful this year of like the. Something Caitlin talked about. Yeah, this this like approach that I think she called it like the five whys, where you don't stop at the surface of why costs go up. But you just, you keep asking the next why and you just dig deep and it helps us all understand. Um, you know, like your water boiler question in a different setting, that would be a great like five why exploration. You know, and I don't think it's a wasted effort for us to eventually go through that.
Well, as we see like, okay, like also the presentation of, this is where, this is our goal, but this is where we are, or this is where we are. Do doing that same exploration, right, about why that is, where where the gaps.
Recognizing that the goal isn't to interrogate an individual, not to interrogate literally. But to interrogate root cause and to grow understanding into like. Right.
You know, what were the questions that, you know, weren't being addressed and to make sure that we have a mechanism in place to address those questions.
Yeah, yeah.
And then she just jotted down some um initial. Adjustments or changes or things that are be that are happening this year. Um, so they're going to assume to not add as many. Yeah, F T Es, um. Like Kelly talked about, working, like being of thumbing into the work together, just to have a real handle on some of those special ed needs. And like the weighted case load work that Kelly's done and just really keeping track of uh those evaluations and all of that. So having a project to work on that. We talked about our enrollment policy, so that's something we'll review. We've got the facility studies, we'll be able to prioritize there, and we can project, we know what. Um, a little bit, gotta handle some of the spending around maintenance teams. Um. As you know, we went through extraterritorial pay and like the alignment of that, so that that's consistent, because it was a little bit. Um, like salaries in the past, it wasn't quite equitable or the same across the board, best room budgets. We added a field trip fee and then getting the technology on a cycle. So that's just the beginning of. A list of some of the things that were.
So we've got notes for follow-up with Lindsay, and obviously, this was just for us to get some foundation review and. We're just gonna keep having these discussions.
I just wanna say anything for you, so I it's very helpful. Information in the year, um, and and going to your point, Carla, about the five why, it's a lot of information here that that. Uh, that really helps guide, that helps guide us. So, you know, I I think this is, you know, I think that, you know, we love to see. And and it really is helpful, so I'm glad that we have that.
We asked him, she she hurts, she responded. It's good. Uh, okay, the next uh topic is district financial consultants. You had an executive summary. Uh, yeah, I don't know if you wanna jump in a little bit about. No, it's, oh. No, it's okay, it's okay. Um, yeah, cause I'm, so basically, we all know why we're, well, maybe they don't know, uh, but. We know that we are looking to implement stronger and better budget practices and structures and systems of accountability. And um in doing that, we wanna make sure we're exploring every possible tool, every possible support, collaboration. What are we doing now? So we've spent. Lot of months now, two, I'd say at least two months now, um, like reviewing our, what was in place, thinking about what we need. Um, and then doing some research on what's out there, what else could we be missing? So I personally have had conversations with Benny Houts and Roger Price at WOSB. Um, and they have Lindsay, we know, so she's not here, but I was hoping she'd be able to speak to. The work she does with Baird as a consultant, um, and WOSBO, um, and I think she's very involved with WOSBO. Uh, my conversations with Ben and with Roger, um. Have essentially told, have, maybe I might be biased, but they've confirmed that we are like on the right path. That the the systems we are looking to implement are exactly what we should be doing, um, the budget calendar, more detailed monthly reports. Um, uh, thinking about ways that the board is going to have ongoing touches budget. With the budget and education for the board, um, and. Uh, there were a couple of things that we talked that WOSB brought up that they do. One is an organizational audit, which costs money. But also Alison and I have been talking and with the work we're going to be doing with job descriptions through our policy and then. Um. Uh, the work that, so through that work, and actually, we've been given some some materials from Roger to utilize as well. We'll be able to to do a lot of that internal assessment. Through the job descriptions, through creating something more around like essential roles and responsibilities. And the reason you wanted to ask is to make sure like, are we overburdening one person? Or are there things falling through the cracks? Like, you know, every district, no matter the size, has to achieve certain things. And so the organizational audit lays out those things and then.
And also redundancies.
And redundancies, correct.
Budget evaluation.
Correct.
You have redundant positions there might be.
Um, yeah, and.
So a couple of quick questions. Um, one is, we have an audit every year for itself, um.
Yep, we asked about that.
What is the difference between then uh an organizational audit?
An organizational audit is looking at position and job duties, roles, responsibilities.
So it's forensic and advisory as opposed to, you know, the match up the suspense to this particular position.
Right, correct, you're correct, because I asked if we needed to do an audit, like an immediate audit, and they did not. That was not recommended. That was, that was said, if you're doing it annually and it's coming, like, then that is, that's fine. And I I was not told that we are in this position where we need to do that immediately. Um, there were some best practices we talked about when conferring, when to confer with our auditors, which Lindsay does. Um, I think, I know she does, but like, I don't think there are, yeah, she, yeah, she has a lot of touches with them and, um. There were a couple of things about our business website page that they brought to our attention that we're working on. Um, in terms of like the actual financial situation that we are in, there is no magical fix. Um, there is nothing besides what I believe Lindsay and we all are going to be doing, which is just. Being mindful of ha- of every financial decision we make going forward and figuring out how our bus is gonna serve students. Within our financial capacity. So we're like, what 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 can we do though, really? You know what it's so, and they're like, no, I'm like, no. Uh, no, no advice for that. So I guess in my thinking is that we are have now. Basically laid a foundation for some really good, strong financial stewardship and oversight to take place. And I think we have to give that a shot, um, and tweak as like as needed, um. And start seeing how did, how are these like more detailed monthly reports gonna play out? How is this dashboard going to help us? Um, how is having a budget calendar going to change things? And how is having uh ongoing board education and. Collaboration between the administration and um the board when we're thinking about budget before. It's not just gonna come to us as a preliminary and. Um, there's gonna be a lot more touches. So my suggestion at this point is like, we utilize what we have and who we al- already utilize. I think we're gonna see Lindsay develop a stronger relationship with Baird and probably have them.
Even come and present.
Even come and present and things like that. And the Baird, what Baird, I think will be able to help us do too is. Where we know we've had issues is in requesting information in a particular like manner or style that we. Five different individuals wanna receive. And I think some of Baird and some of WOSBO's expertise are in that area specifically, which is. Translating from business administrator speak to board speak to community speak, so. Um, yeah, so that's, so that's it. So I don't know, questions, thoughts, feelings. And.
So I guess, you know, I have a lot of thoughts about this, and they're not recommending, for example, an audit that's great.
Right.
Um, you know, one mechanism to have to ensure kind of continued. Uh, consultation and work with WOSBO and WOSBO, with WOSBO being wonderful, um, what.
Yep, you got it.
But you know what? Uh, because he he here's the thing, I wanna make sure that we are are maximizing our access to consultants. Who can provide advice and also, I I guess. Having some follow-through on what these recommendations are. So how do those things get communicated to the board? And how do we make sure as a board that we're seeing that follow-through? Um, that that's kinda, you know, my interest in this. I mean, I I I would suggest maybe having, you know, regular updates on on that topic in some way. Um, you know, I'm not sure if that's part of a potential finance committee, for example, or if that'd be part of, you know, separate budget item. And and agenda, but I would like to make sure, and more importantly, I mean, I feel strongly about. Communicating to the public, there were a lot of questions that were raised uh about the budget that we dealt with. A lot of people were very concerned. I just wanna make sure that we are, most importantly, doing the work of engaging with these experts. And following through on any recommendations, but also communicating that we're engaging in that work, following up on recommendations, so.
Thank you, no, sorry.
Uh, how that looks, I am not behold to, I I just wanna ensure that that's happening.
I forgot to add, but one of the ideas that we were discussing and. Our planning on putting in place is just a community uh communication around our budget. Like so, it it would have basically been like a budget narrative that would have existed pre to us approving a budget. But at this point, I think what makes sense is to put out a communication that explains, um. Our budget and what that means and how we, like what a budget narrative generally is. Um, how we got here and what we can do as a community to support like our schools, like that's gonna involve being engaged. That's gonna like, I also am floating an idea that people aren't necessarily receptive. About a a task force or some kind of committee around the financial health or the like the budget fiscal situation. I know that some districts have done it, like.
Like an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, teachers, community members, um, family staff, et cetera. Like, I think Brown Tier has done it. Like, other districts facing deficit want to get like all the minds in the room to to. Think about this and actually understand the real impact of what our financial, um, what our health is right now in that regard. But so community communication, there's gotta be a better way to say that, a district communication to all. Um, we will be working on around the budget and what we're doing moving forward, et cetera. Um, and what, how people can be involved or be engaged, um. I think, I know what you're saying in terms of like updates around consultant usage, but I guess I would, I would. I wonder if that is like something Lindsay adds to an update or whether there's a business office monthly update. But I mean, I think that's gonna come in the form of our cow and our regular board meetings through the financial reports. So I would just.
Part of my update.
And part of your update, but I would think like, in a few months, if we are getting the product or the type of information that we want. That would like, that would be the time where I would say, okay, like, we need to check in on what supports we might need, because we're still not. Like, I think at this point, we've exhausted the consultant's advice. We are doing everything, right? And we need to give it a chance to like settle in and tweak and figure out like what makes sense for us. So I don't think Lindsay would be like opposed to any like just you checking in if we're like wanting to check in, like in. I don't think Lindsay would be like opposed to any like just you checking in if we're like wanting to check in like in some way. But I think it's gonna become apparent, I mean, I think it's gonna be obvious.
When you say we're doing things right, you're going forward, we're doing things right, right? Not, not what was done in the past.
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm commenting on the structures, the systems that we are putting in place. And we, they're literally all just falling into place, so we have to give them, I think, that would be my opinion, that we have to give them a shot. To see how they work and whether that, that improves.
Okay, but I was just making sure going forward, we're setting ourselves up.
Yes, that's exactly.
Just to kind of be clear then.
Yeah.
Have there been recommended steps, I, I wanna say this kind clearly, but also not accusing like, um. I think that the urgency of the situation of less than what we anticipated, given the budget reports, at least that we got, you know, at the last month's regular meetings. Which adds its own questions, but I mean, to the extent that we're ahead of what that board budget is, that means that perhaps we're not on. As dire financial as we thought, but I mean, I think that there is some urgency and. While I believe in having calm and, you know, having kind of a reasoned approach to addressing these issues. You said that we've done everything, um I mean. Is it, is, is our current budget situation. In characterized as something that is urgent or dire in a way that requires, you know. Some other immediate action, I'm hearing no, but I guess.
Would you, do you think?
And a budget expert, which is why I wanna have a consultant.
I, I sat in a long call with Roger Price, right? And he, he had seen our numbers, um he wasn't in a panicked state of mind.
Neither was Ben.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I took away from it was that this last year, I'm looking at my notes from my, from our call with him. That last year, a lot of schools were surprised at the end of the school year, and he says it's common. For surprises to come at the end of the school year, if you remember that, especially around Fed, and so um. And there was an interesting conversation around that, with Lindsay kind of talking in more detail about. Not having a strong historical view on Fed spending and the role Kelly is now playing in helping to map out. The cost of IEPs and kind of regularizing that. That air, you know, that topic area to help her with the budgeting. Um and again, that was a really strong conversation with Roger kind of offering a lot of insight, but in general, I'm sitting here looking through my notes. Cause I asked that, like, you know, one of us asked, right, like, what's the panic, are we on a panic button, are we? You know, are we at death's door? And he was like, no, no, it's just like.
No.
It, no, the answer was no.
Yeah.
That was my takeaway.
The only reason I might panic is because what was presented to us was we were gonna, we're projected to have a fund balance of twenty one thousand dollars.
In June.
In June, like if something. Well, I know, but I, again, I asked for something.
No, no, Ben's referring to the final budget that we.
In June.
The one that would have left us with a twenty one thousand balance was the one that we were looking at in October.
And it hasn't been updated. It's just difficult, it's. It's difficult for me not to panic without something official saying, actually, we're gonna have a fund balance of a million dollars, that would make me feel a bit more comfortable.
But the ultimate budget we approved didn't have a twenty one thousand dollar balance, it had a seven hundred thousand plus because that or five.
I don't think. I don't think.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was five something, you're right.
Yeah, because there was a.
Because we were able to increase the levy and then we put that in there, so yeah, I, I agree.
That's another reason not to feel like we're at death's door.
But I think the monthlies will help give you that every month, you'll see like what we're projecting and you'll get that every month.
But the sense of having a twenty one thousand dollar fund balance, I mean, I, I think that these are things a lot of people lash out to. And rightly concerned about, um and so even so, right, I mean. We took one point five million dollars out of the fund balance, which frankly, the board not entirely understanding that. Uh over the course of a year, expenditures aside, um. But that was a one point five, and then, you know, definitely two billion or whatever it was, you know, the one point two, whatever that number was. Uh you know, it, it, it did have the effect of making it feel that we've obliterated something that we've worked on for so long. And not saying that it's the case, and I understand now that things are a little bit different with our budget, but those are things that as presented. Right, um leave people scrambling, ranting, a little frantic about it. Um so I'm glad you guys had that conversation.
I mean, like, we've been frantic about it since early, since, since we found out, no, since, I mean, since the.
No, I, 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 I understand, and then we had last month.
I think the appropriate amount of panic occurred.
So.
And then it continued, I mean, like, we've continued to, yeah, I don't, I don't think panic, I think. And that is why we will have so many more touches, right, and that is why our reports are changing, and that is everything's gonna be in a different.
Is it possible to get a new prediction to what our June fund balance is gonna be? Because on the website, it says twenty one thousand.
Won't we get that with um where does her new?
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, I mean, I think we need to update what you're saying.
I, I, I would, I've, I've been asking for that, yeah, I, I would really like an update.
Yeah, I don't, I think she's not comfortable doing that, but I don't understand that either. I don't know if she wants to go into D P I's work, she keep doing that one every month, but I think.
No, not doing it every month, but shouldn't we be publishing what we actually passed? We amended what's on the agenda, so somewhere should be published what we actually passed.
Oh, which, oh, I see what you're saying, that's right.
Yeah, we should, yeah, I see what you're saying. Then Ben can see the.
If you wanna see that.
Instead of it just being in my little notebook.
Because it changed before, I think it makes sense, yeah, yeah.
But also, you know, and, and, and this is something for the regular meeting, right? I mean, if we're on this path of savings that, you know.
We'll know it.
Yeah, I mean, then, then, then what does that make it look like? I mean, you know, if, if we're really after five months. A million ahead of what our budget is, then, you know, after, you know, a year.
Coming at the end of the year.
Wives around, we shouldn't be that far off budget, so I think in the seesaw, this is more wise, we should be asking as we explore budget.
I, I totally agree, I'm just saying those of which I'll state what information we currently have. And, and then, you know, whether we publish it, you know, as we do this document, I, I, I don't wanna necessarily confuse people by putting them too much in place. Certainly for board people to understand, you know, those numbers and the depth that we're going at, um I think that, you know, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And spendings.
And Andy, you did ask the five whys, which is what we're trying to bring to the next meeting.
I think it's very safe to say that although we are concerned for the matter, there can be right, any sense of panic. Is gone, we've done a lot to kind of catch up and address these situations. We've been given information that we've been able to evaluate in certain way, and so we've been able, you know, to kind of work through some of that. And I just wanna make sure that the public understands that that's the trajectory that we're on. It's not just that we understand where things are, I wanna make sure it's maybe understand that's somebody else's things that are out there, um that, you know, uh that's it.
Could we just clarify the action items that have got out of this conversation?
Uh there are, it's an overview of what we've done, I'm not sure.
On this last conversation?
You're talking about.
Right now. So we're, so we're asking for Lindsay to update the projected. Like I, I just want, I already am like, what are we asking her to do?
Yeah, good. So.
So based on that additional fun ten amount that we're able to like, to renew that worksheet.
Right.
And update that, yes.
And then we also want an update about current expenditures this year and an analysis of why there might be. A differential from last year's numbers, correct?
Which she was planning on. Yep, okay.
Yep.
And then there were some clarifying questions that we need her to answer from the last.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Very efficient.
That horse is dead.
Uh finance committee, so it was brought up by Ben and Andy, I believe. Around just wanting to discuss the idea of having an additional committee uh created or. Yeah, an additional meeting or finance, and so I asked the both of them to. Um think about that and, and give us some kind of idea of like what that looks like, who's on it. Or how, how often are we meeting, what kind of information are we going through to give us um a foundation for discussion?
So. What I kind of envisioned when I suggested this is having a. Pretty of the whole that was focused solely on budget, so that we could address all these issues uh in, in the budget sphere. And that, that, and, and the challenge is, I don't want another monthly meeting. But, you know, if you have all this information only every other month, you know, are, are you doing, you get that information? And so I'm not sure if that's what you do, but I do think that we ought to have, um to the extent that we can. Um and, and maybe it can be strategic, but having focused sessions uh solely on, you know, some of these issues. Um maybe quarterly, um and, and having something. That is going to kind of summarize where we were up to a certain point and where we're going and, and we kind of in, in in-depth dive. Um I'm not beholden to the idea, I, I don't know that we need it if, if we're doing things that we've been talking about and. Maybe it's a wait and see, uh you know, if we need to do it, um and I'd suggest this, uh things look a little bit different than. Uh I, I think that they look now, and obviously this is a concern still there, but um. I would just envision that as a board, and by the way, speaking to your idea of having some form of an ad hoc committee with the community. Um I understand, you know, the importance of that, but I, 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 I think that you run the risk in creating an ad hoc committee of numerous members. Of really having people who might have an agenda that is solely focused on one area or not. Maybe it's social learning, maybe it would be, you know, especially specifically, uh maybe someone who admits you with uh, uh. You know, with uh growth development, uh grateful, you know, maybe it's someone who, you know, believes that something ought to be. Done, you know, in the library, and, you know, and you can get all kinds of community members. Who have, who aren't elected, you know, representatives, uh having a voice in committee on budget matters, on policy, which is the purpose of board. So if we did something, I think that it ought to, and I want public, I want their opinion, I want people to consider it. Right, um the administration had to propose their recommendation, then we have to act on it. Um but, you know, I, I think that we would implement, I would want that to be a board specific entity.
The way I've seen the ad hoc committee work is that they would make recommendations, so you would. First of all, I think everybody has agendas, what can you do is like, what is your agenda, like get that out at the beginning, you have a good facilitator. Or a good person, you know, leader running that, and you're gonna have a consensus not based on one person's agenda. I understand, I, I, that's a fear, I get it, but I think you would also wanna have a group representative of our community and the various like. Our diverse communities, staff, families, et cetera, but, and I, and we can definitely discuss that further, but um. It would be like, hey, come up with five ways to solve our financial situation. You know, like you, you give them like a task or something and they say like, make five recommendations to the board about what you would do if you were in this financial situation.
Five examples of balanced budgets.
Something like that, I don't know, I mean, I don't know exactly.
Advisors, you know, I mean.
You would hope you would find community members who are.
Yeah.
Who are experts, that's the reason to have an ad hoc committee.
And community members have a lot of wisdom, I just, you know, I also worry about managing it and being agile enough to make change and. The consequence of, look, every other thing that we do as a board, we could have an ad hoc committee that includes the community on that specific item. So why is budget the only thing that we do that?
Agenda item, sorry, so let's talk offline and let's, or add it, let's add it to a future cow or something. Um financial, finance committee, did, and we, did you wanna add on to Andy?
Yeah, so I mean, as long as we have a designated time to talk about the budget. You know, the problem with doing it during account meetings is that, you know, there might be, might be. You might have a lot of items on it, and so it might be like, kind of like, okay, let's get through this, but we, I mean, again. To use the word urgency, I mean, again, so far as we know, our fund balance is twenty one thousand. Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
We know it's.
There's a little bit of urgency with how we're going to spend the money, right? Because if so, if something were to happen, like we had to fix a boiler, you know, like that, that's gonna be a huge problem, so. So doing it during cow, I mean, and, you know, Andy's saying like, well, okay, having another meeting would kind of, you know. That'd be great, but uh quarterly, I don't know if it's uh frequent enough. So I mean, if we can do something where we say, hey, we have a budget meeting before cow. It's five to six, and then let me do the rest of the cow meeting from there, I'd be okay with something like that, um. Where maybe it's not on separate days and it's a committee of the whole.
Which just doesn't need more time. So, I, again, I guess I would just urge us to see how, so. Budget finance will essentially be removed from consent agenda moving forward at a regular meeting, which means as we employ these new. Um tools, we'll be discussing them in depth, they should be accompanied by budget summaries or narratives from Lindsay too, so. I'm wondering if that might meet your needs, we just don't know, cause we haven't done it yet.
So how about this, for the next two or three meetings, for cow meetings, you designate some, you designate an hour. To the budget, and then.
To talk about what in the budget exactly.
Where we are, what the projections are, um how we're spending the money, where we're spending the money, what kind of transfers we're doing.
But we'll be doing that at the regular board meeting, so you wanna do it at cow too?
Yes, right now I do, yeah, and then we can evaluate, maybe in March, do we still need to keep on doing this? Because this, there is a bit of urgency with this, I mean, we're overspending by over two million dollars. Well, yeah, we did and we are planning on it.
So I. All right, yeah, I, again, the numbers are wrong, Ben, it's not twenty one thousand, it's not two million, you voted on it. So you know what the actual numbers are, and you gotta work with the actual numbers we voted on, one point five million, which is still awful, but it's not too. And the fund balance is projected to be what, six hundred, seven hundred thousand, not twelve thousand, we all voted on it. That, you've heard that so many times, you gotta work with the correct numbers.
I'm going to face off the numbers that are written.
Yeah, but you sat here and voted on it, you voted on that, you know it was amended in an open meeting.
And I, I asked for the numbers to be changed.
So I, I don't wanna have a, a, a fixed time allotted for any agenda item. And we're all focused on this, I don't want a separate committee, I, I don't wanna have times that I can't attend, I wanna participate. In every budget discussion, I think we can do that in our regular cow and regular meetings. I, I personally am opposed to kind of a, a formalized, like, here's the hour, and it just turns into like a weird interrogation of Lindsay. I want us to be focused on topics and such as, we're talking about expenses, I wanna get a presentation on expenses. We're talking about revenue, I wanna get a presentation on revenue from Lindsay, and then we have like specific conversations. So I don't mind the idea of a, like a quarterly deep dive, but I don't think we should be rigid. Well, we're, I know, we're all working hard, we're all focused, and we all feel the same sense of urgency. You know, i- if we get rigid, we might like crowd out some stuff we need to do, like some education, like Danielle's talking about, like. Where we can lob to Lindsay, like, I don't understand the fund twenty seven transfer, do you? I have no idea what happens there, I'd love to have. You know, I'd love to just have some flexibility as a board to be able to go where we need to go. That's, and that's my worry with moving to like, this is the finance committee model, because if. I, I just, I think we should keep going.
And also through the budget calendar, like, we are planning touches with her about budget assumptions and forecasting in January or February. There will be, uh. I, we had talked about like uh board education and like incorporating some more like, more like workshop type things where you would do those deep dives. And I would actually guess those are probably going to happen quarterly, so if there's something we can add into those. That is, that is at, are the forefront of our thinking at that time, we could totally do that.
And the budget calendar will be brought back to the next meeting, so you guys have a chance to look at it and see if there's something you feel like. Can we add anything about this, or can we add?
Yeah, yeah.
By, by the way, and I, I thought it might have mentioned this earlier, but if I didn't, I apologize, but really. The retreat is a great time to talk about the.
Yeah, the retreat is, yeah, so that's January, February, you have a touch with Lindsay about her uh forecasting. And also like uh budget guidelines. Uh budget guidelines and assumptions, which is not something I think the board has ever really talked with. With a business, uh the business director about today. And then in the May, you would do as you could focus on finance and then again.
By the way, just one quick question, um. I I know we talked about it at present, um but. Did we discuss having the financials if not in the tenth agenda?
Yeah. Yep, right, they're not gonna be, so we will be discussing.
So.
Yeah.
I.
Yeah, I could just.
By giving it, you know, wait and see. I think that the suggestion at the time, you know, and and the idea, it's a worthy idea. I agree with Carla that we have to be flexible on this. Uh I agree with Ben that we have to make sure that we publish that we be on the right information, but.
Yes.
Let's make sure that, you know, we're using the right information when we talk about these things. And you know, I I I think that we kind of hammered everyone overhead with twenty one thousand and. I think people get that's what we uh thought and I think that we will pass that and I think. In this debate, you know, we can definitely move past, you know, any concerns on that.
Okay, so um I think we can move on to employee handbook. Just keeps.
Yeah, so um. I know we've done a lot of work on this and it it looks really a lot better than it said when started. Um but and I appreciate that every time I've kind of thrown out an FAQ, people have added more thoughts and added more feedback. So I just wanted to like throw on, here's the final draft I have right now. So that everybody has a chance to look at it, make sure I didn't miss anybody's feedback or miss anybody's thoughts. And then the intent was just to simply bring it back. To the next meeting for approval. That was all I had is I was just bringing it back to say, here's here's my most up to date draft. Please send all the feedback and. Let me know if I missed anything.
This is just a discussion item for today.
Yes, this is just kind of informational, just to say. We've had like multiple touches on it and FAQ docs and I just wanna make sure you have time to look at it between now and December twentieth. If you get, especially if you gave like feedback to make sure I didn't miss something, yes. Um Karen went through and made a beautiful table of contents for us with all the piece numbers and then there were a few things that were um. Highlighted just because they were kind of the last bits of feedback and I wanted to make sure everybody was drawn to the areas.
Does anybody have?
Uh yeah, just one.
Okay, Ben?
So with the credit reimbursement, so the one we approved in June of last year. It's worded slightly different than the one uh that's in the handbook right now. Uh I think the only substantive want uh change was that uh the one we approved. Uh says that the superintendent, so the one we approved last June, says the superintendent needs to approve all course work. But I think in the one here, it says the superintendent and principal.
Oh, oh, so the document, I mean, we could change it, but the process we have right now.
Yeah.
So there's a document, so when somebody signs up for classes, first it goes to the principal, principal signs off on it and then it goes to me, so it's just.
Yeah, my only concern is the one the the one we passed just said superintendent. So it'd be officially passed. Well, it doesn't matter if I, well, I I don't know if it matters.
Yeah.
Because I think we legitimately.
What we passed wasn't a policy, so it's not in violation of policy.
Yeah, but I'm just saying we pass it as a board.
Right.
And it did not have a principle on there.
Yeah.
And it is formatted a little bit differently, which I guess it's fine.
To try to. Yeah, so what I did is I just kept the format similar and I just changed the monitoring and my own space I won't be passed, but I'm. I'm open to whatever.
And I guess I would imagine if you were, if it came to your logic consult with the building principal.
Your concern is that there's a subsidiary gatekeeper, right? That there might be someone who wants something and if. There's an extra layer that was part of what we passed.
Well, no, yeah, I'm just saying what we passed is slightly different.
I think more so if we pass something and the language is then changed, it's not what we passed.
Exactly, so sure. So it I can look at the one that you and just make.
You would strike approved by the building.
Well, or I mean, again, I don't know if that's to be worded exactly like we passed, uh because it is worded differently, but the.
That's the main.
You know, the amounts are the same.
Mm-hmm.
The reimbursement's the same, the and and also. I think what was posted to the Glendale River Hills website did not indicate that you got two thousand dollars more. For a second masters.
Posted where?
Uh so I I was looking this up and. Had it in September, the handbook was online.
Oh, because last year we passed that after last year's handbook was posted, I bet. And so it's probably still the old handbook and we have.
I know, I, yeah, I just know.
Yeah.
So the teacher should know. That. Where does it say this?
Yeah.
The second masters, you get that.
Agreed.
Two thousand dollars.
And the the ones that do have it do know because we made the adjustment, but I see what you're saying, so it's probably the old handbook.
Because yeah, if someone wears a old handbook, they would see eight thousand dollars for a master. That's it, but if they got a second one, then they get two thousand.
Was that part of what we?
That's part of what we approved in June of uh.
Nice catch, I forgot that.
Yeah.
I forgot all about this little extra amount.
Yeah, I just know about it because Tamika and I were going at it.
Yes, we were.
But she, yeah, she she did put that in from what I wrote.
Okay, Ben, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, I got that, but I'll change it. So I continue to be like confused as we work through policy. Or what happens when we implement, like we're voting in fundamental policies that are reflected in some of these employee handbook terms. When the employee handbook terms get replaced by policy terms, like are you gonna be constantly updating the employee handbook? Or is this static for the remainder of this school year? And all the new policies we're implementing go into effect like July first for the next school year, or are there different policies, you know? So that's what I'm dominating on. I thought that the paragraph you added about.
Yeah.
Married prevent many provisions and hamburger piece on existing policies that reference twenty three, twenty four. School year, the board will be revising or appealing and adopting policies as this work proceeds, any provisions that handles.
Yeah.
Like you put that in.
Yeah, you did.
God, I mean, unless of course there's a specific policy that we say we're.
It's not at a certain time.
Okay. But I, in my mind, that kind of covered that, that the policy.
So that would be our due diligence to decide which policies we want to implement immediately, which we would make effective that the. Like in the next contract.
Yeah, that's what I would think, yeah.
And then.
Thank you for. Because obviously like the nondiscrimination and the complaint process and all of those policies are affected now.
Right, right.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So then, one of the things that I have struggled with as an employee of a district who has a similar policy, right? Like as we improve policies. Those things and that you should keep, you should keep up to date. And I'm like, how? How do I know these things change?
Yeah.
So how do we make sure staff are aware if something substantive has changed in the handbook?
I think, I mean, that we keep it out, especially if it's of some major.
Right, we added to. When we were, when we're discussing it or passing it, we just make sure to know that.
We need to make sure slowly, yeah, keep it out, yeah, cuz that's fair.
You're right.
Enough.
And then you would do like an annual update of the handbook, right?
So it's on the work calendar.
Yes. If you have July to look at the handbook, what about, I that was one of my other points. It's like thinking about when you, when you do have committees for things like. Would you put handbook committee like uh starts work or something on our board calendar? I I know, maybe it wouldn't touch us, but like it would be good to know.
But like updates on committee work or something would be.
Yeah, I think that with one, there's something like policy that's related to policy. That's one of my. Um Andy, did you have something?
I would just, I say, I mean, I I seem to have all, there were a lot of different reasons why we did this and yeah, part of it, I think there's a financial impact, but. You know, my reflection in the history of dealing with daytime office, um frankly, lack of clarity. Um there was also potentially, you know, some abuse. Well, yeah, you know.
About policy, Jenny.
Well, PTO is in here, yeah.
Yeah, but it's the current.
So I guess the the point is is that we've been trying to make changes here and, you know, in the handbook to have promote. I guess predictability and clarity and you've been working on this for quite some time now. And you've been getting, you know, a lot of impact from the board. You know, and so I appreciate that, you know, you've done a lot of that work. I appreciate that there's a lot of people here who have invested in understanding what's going on and, you know, I. Uh I've gotten a few emails so far, you know, with respect to, you know, concerns just in general. Um and. Two things I wanna just say, one is I probably, whatever we do, we have to just, whatever changes that we make throughout this handbook. We have to lock the handbook for the year and not update changes uh like we're talking about. Um but the other thing is that I I I really think that, um actually, I mean, that that it really relates first one, but. Um I I I wanna make sure that we have some clarity and flexibility, um but I also wanna make sure that. Now this is out there and now that we're maybe on the verge of taking action at our next regular meeting. Um that we give some meaningful time uh to staff and to make sure that they communicate. I mean, I know some people were able to make emails for today. Um I don't know with our rules, uh we could take any comments now on any uh change.
I'm willing to hear. This uh all my comments on the policies when they get to the policies.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think people are, I I don't think anyone's here to comment on the current policy in the handbook.
Right.
Yeah, thank you, Zach.
Okay.
Thanks, Jack. Policies.
All right.
That's what they're.
But we're gonna be voting on the handbook at the next.
And we're not voting on the handbook now, so those, so, yeah, there's time for that, yes.
I guess my point is let's maybe, and I think that we shouldn't, I think we'd rather have finality, but I do wanna make sure that we have a. A thorough discussion, you know, as appropriate when the time comes. And and if that means that we vote on it next uh. Me great if it means that it gets delayed shortly. Uh I I I I don't know, but I I do wanna make sure that I will have.
You know, I want, I want it all. Um uh related to the handbook, oh, sorry, yes. I know, I saw you before and then I thought.
I know.
He was talking and then I'm asking.
Oh, so with regards to bereavement leave, yeah, what was brought to my attention recently. I was at a different district was that the that district's policy is the bereavement leave taken in a chunk. And yet in today's world, that's not really necessarily the practice, is that?
Yeah.
Is that, it's not the language that's in here. I just wanted to know, like, do we need to clarify that up to five days can be distributed?
I don't think that we've ever not allowed somebody to do that. We'll clarify that.
Yeah, that's like.
So it's.
Yeah, I just was.
Obvious, yeah. Because people do that.
Planning on a separate day. There's so many things that are.
It's for, it's for.
Right.
Yeah, I and I know that that's happened, but yeah, we.
Yeah, I just think it's always great if we really say what we need to do.
Like inter- it just actually gets seconded, yeah.
Was there ever around bereavement leave? Was there ever a language in this policy around saying what bereavement leave was for? Like, um or maybe I've seen that in other districts, like bereavement, like is bereavement leave for like grieving? Or is bereavement leave solely for planning or anything related to?
I think it's not for being up to the what is discretion.
Yeah, this, in this case, it's a bag. I just couldn't remember if that was. I was just, yeah.
I think it depends on the school board, honestly, and.
I thought I saw it.
What they wanna do.
It's not here now.
I think if we're safe, if we're clear that it doesn't actually in a row, then it can be flexed into.
And those five days of bereavement leave are over and above their PTO and I think that needs to be clarified as well cuz it doesn't like.
Uh right.
It needs to be clear that it's.
It's in addition.
Not paid out of their career PTO, yeah, right.
But it's not paid.
It's not paid.
Is it?
Same, yes. No, those are all things that can be clarified that it's paid.
It's listed under unpaid time off in this handbook.
I think so it does note at the end of the bereavement leave description, it says all other bereavement leave will be taken out of accrued time. So I think just clarifying the language, like the intention is that we pay for five days. It can be used with the employee's discretion.
And they're in addition to.
And they're over and above what's accrued.
Yeah, you need to. Yeah, I'll I'll go back to that.
Uh right below it, uh when you say two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, uh is that ten days, fifteen days and twenty days?
Sorry, I missed the words.
Vacation right underneath. It says two weeks, three weeks and four weeks. Is that fourteen days, twenty one days, twenty eight days or is that ten, fifteen, twenty?
Second question.
Which weekend would it be?
Well, it says weeks.
He's saying, is that the work week or is it?
Like how many days is that?
It's that can be interpreted as fourteen days.
Twenty eight.
So maybe it's ten days.
Twenty, I have no idea.
So Claire just saying, but I, I mean.
So that obviously you would think is working days, but I.
Well, everything, everything else is days. This is weeks, huh?
I know, whatever you.
Unit of.
But that would be good to clarify.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Um.
Instead of just saying, yeah.
Thank you for your clarification. Work on it once in a lifetime.
Yeah.
Thank you for the language.
I think you need, I think I would move bereavement leave to under leaves.
Yeah, so that it doesn't look like it's unpaid.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that.
I didn't notice that you're right. Sorry, Karen.
Um. I had to, one thing was, i- is there a reason the employee handbook isn't uh public in our minds?
It is typically.
But not in our district right now.
Not right now, but it is.
You have to log in as a staff member to see it and I I would suggest making it public and I. At some point adding links into the policies that that are referenced. Cuz I think that there's some ease of use there.
Once we have to.
Yes. Well, I I was looking a month or two ago and it was public. It was just recently taken off.
I've never, it maybe regardless of.
Well, no, no, right now it's not. I was looking, trying to look it up today and it's not.
Right.
But I'm pretty sure it wasn't the past.
Well, publicly available was if I I don't know, probably was nothing else.
Correct, online is, I think.
No, I understand.
I think it just makes sense to make it available on our website if there's no reason to not. And then, yes, eventually, maybe the next handbook committee or iteration can add links to the policies. And then I just kind of like this sort of existential question that I'm not sure I, there's an answer to, but when I look at holidays. I told you this, I why, who who designates what are the like pay holidays? How is it that? Like, like, how is it that Good Friday, is it, is it like all national, what is the statute? What is the law? Who decides this?
I don't know, I just know, like every school district pretty much does that.
So we have, so are you saying that we have some, what I wanna know is, do we have um? Any room discretion in this?
Probably not on federal holidays, but.
I think.
Huh?
She does give any voting.
No, actually, wait, I thought I saw that in our, of not voting holiday, but you can vote.
No.
Oh, sorry, floating.
I do a personal report for fun, no.
No, right, so this, so this is a question I have just started thinking of like equity and thinking about the conversation to come around um. Paid uh paid leave and and stuff.
I would assume there's discretion because I've, this is the first district I've ever been in that is the Jewish holidays on. So obviously there's discretion.
Right, they're off, but not, so. Anyway, I that's, so if there is discretion, then that's something I would like to discuss, like just.
They are paid, so I don't know.
Yeah, they're they're depending on your designation, yes, they are.
They're paid for.
And I would, and I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying take away any paid holidays. I'm just like, the ones we designate reflect a certain bias that I'm just. I'm curious about where that comes from.
And and I'm wondering if that's a discussion for the next iteration of the handbook?
Probably.
And like, maybe.
But but still, I'm like, I'm just putting it out there.
You're not the only one. It was brought up in my household too, but and I think it's a, it's a worthy conversation to have.
Like, let's lead the way out of that if that's.
And then by me doing all that, but so the other piece of that then is looking at our partner schools. Because we align all of our days with the partner schools because it's.
Our partner schools are up on what's.
I'm just saying their family, I'm here and I'm in LA and I like the missing days off and.
It's a consideration, it's a discussion I think to have, I guess.
I I think actually there's room to work on that because, you know, as I read the holiday schedule. Uh two things strike me. One is it says, you know, it's a clerical and twelve months staff. Uh coach, total, uh twelve months total on clerical staff. Um in case it's the required work. And Amy doesn't say that, but I mean, one, it, I read this as they don't get those holidays.
Yeah, that's also, I mean, that's an.
And also would be time and a half if they're on salary uh an hourly. So we might want to get, I I remember tweeting this previously that I think at one point we actually listed holidays. For all staff, including teachers, and it was that laundry list of New Year's Day, everything else, but didn't make sense and that's why it was changed. Reason why it didn't make sense is because they already get off New Year's, uh they already get off for this day, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, for Thanksgiving, right? Those are national holidays. And so they don't have to work on the national holidays. So. I I agree, might be something for us to look at, you know, in the next, you know, round, but. And so they don't have to work on the national holidays. So I I agree, might be something for us to look at, you know, in the next, you know, round, but.
So I had a technical question there. Do we do this through policy or we act, we're implementing policy through the employee handbook?
Look, I mean, I think that, well.
We just sometimes we implement policy changes like that for the handbook.
Or we can ask Neola.
Yeah.
Either. Okay, alright, um okay, anything else related to the handbook? This is just a discussion, I know. We're gonna move on to policy first readings and take a temperature. If we went straight to talking about the policy, uh the sick leave policy that I believe. Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. Um and then we'll go back and we'll we'll walk through and see who has any questions and so. The first policy we're going to discuss will be a policy three, four, three, two, which is around uh. Employees sick leave, employee paid time off. And I would just first say if they're, Allison, if you wanna. Talk of anything about this policy first. I'll let you do that and then I will go to doing uh visitor participation and by show of hands, how many of you wanna talk?
And specifically about this policy.
About this policy.
What is the policy?
Policies around um PTO and sick leave. Okay. Looking forward to like. Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Um okay, Allison, if there's anything you want to preface this policy with, please do.
Great, so um we've got the whole three thousand series, obviously up for review. And those are our staff policies and knowing that I've had conversations with um. Administration and teachers and district staff over the last probably year or so about PTO time. I knew that this was gonna be a policy that I wanted to make sure um everyone was aware that we was in this packet for review. Some of the reasons to potentially make changes to the policy. Um in my opinion. Uh would just be that we've really talked a lot the last two years about staff absences, um staff requests for extended. Leave, which is what came, why we created the once in a lifetime. Um and the reason that those are options is because of just the flexibility of PTO. Completely understand why PTO was implemented. I was a teacher and I was in a district where you've been even used sick time for a sick baby. So it was really challenging um to use those days, so I completely understand the intent of providing some of that flexibility. Um around even calling it all PTO. Um some of the impacts over, you know, there's an impact of. Subcost of subs rotating teacher coverage, um and just that impact on student learning. Uh staff absence patterns, particularly on Mondays and Fridays, which I've talked to staff and association about in the past. Um just the impact that's been shared with me on building culture. Um a staffer covered up, pulled to cover or have extra duties that day because of. Um teachers being out, especially those Fridays and Mondays. We've been talking about the budget a lot, so just looking at the uh potential budget, budgetary impact. Obviously, if a staff member's out, they're paid whether they're here or whether they're not, if they're using a day, but there's the additional um. Costs for substitute or for paying for coverage for those class periods on those days. I've shared that, you know, year round staff, like secretaries, custodial administrators. The differentiation there with vacation days versus not is because what we just talked about a little bit. About some of those days that are built into teacher contracts that aren't built into. Like our custodians or secretaries, if they want the day before Thanksgiving, they have to take it off. If they want spring break, they have to use days. So that's why they have more flexible in vacation days and not just um the sick time. I've been asked if I am um having conversations with staff that might be um exceeding or having some attendance issues. And I think one of the challenges is that. It's hard for me to correct behavior with the current classification of PTO cuz I can't really question it. Um when even if we see a pattern because a flexibility of the day allows for people to just take those days um. As often. And then ultimately. It's a board decision, but since we're reviewing all the policies and I know it's something we've um talked about in the past. And obviously, absences do have an impact on students and student learning, but it was worth review, worth conversation. Prior to the next full year.
Just a point of clarification. So when we were talking about policies, we talked about some policies that we might have an exception for and hold. This is one of those policies, correct? So any potential policy change would be held until next year.
Yes, yes. That would be on us as we vote.
Overview the current versus what the proposal is in this policy. I wanna make sure we're all on the same page. So currently, is it twelve?
So the the amount of hours is exactly the same.
But currently, it's twelve. PTO for any reason. And the proposal in this policy as it stands right now. Is.
The proposal that I have in there is um ten. Sick, which is again appointments, child sick. Mental health days and then two PTO, although I was, I did gather some data from partner schools in the North Shore and most give three. PTO, so obviously that's a board decision too, but I would recommend at least three. So it would be nine and three instead of ten and two. The policy I'm looking at says twelve sick days and the one, the one that's and two of them could be used as personal. So my, I would adjust, I would recommend to adjust that to three. Um just based on some additional research I did to see what our partner schools are in the North Shore is doing.
And just to, just to be clear. For instance, and for my contract, it's all sick leave. I could use up to four days of that sick leave as PTO. They are not discreetly described. So it doesn't, I don't like have PTO. And have a separate sick leave thing. The what you, the language you just used suggested they're two separate things.
And I apologize, the the policy actually says you have this amount of days and you can use up to. So you have um ninety six hours or twelve days of sick. Up to X amount can be converted to personal time.
Okay.
And she's recommending up to three days.
What I'm confused about is uh we have employee.
Are you about, oh, just to be clear, are you about to get into like discussion of the actual policies? I wanted to make sure visitors, are we clarifying something she said?
Uh of the number of sick days, yeah. Well, because it says death of close relative or member of household, but. We have bereavement leave, right? So it's that kind of old, I don't know if that overlaps or. So it's uh, yeah, the policy, where, I mean, it says, you know, the twelve days for. Uh illness of employee illness of close relative or member. And the dead, but we also have bereavement leave.
Right, so on the bereavement leave, it talks about who qualifies as um PTO. That you get those five days for, but then if it if it's not like a spouse or, you know, like there's certain. People that qualify as, I can't remember the word now. In the handbook, right, but. Typically, there might be people that that don't qualify, like say it's your best friend, but you could use this sick time. Yeah, the default is bereavement, but if it's somebody that wouldn't qualify for bereavement, you could use this.
Got it.
So you should change the language so that that's obvious.
Or what does it say in the handbook? It basically just says somebody awards you. As if you use more than five, you can give it to simply. Yeah, right.
Can I go to the interview? Okay. Uh who wants to go first? State your name and your address.
I live in Bayside, but I teach at Glennos Middle School. Education as as well as. Uh so education activities and athletic director and association president. Uh so I'm here representing not just association, but pretty much all the teachers in the district and paraprofessionals. Uh we were able to get a little pull out. Get some feedback, um so I was hoping to join the column meeting, address all of you and just kind of go through our our point of view. Okay, um. So on behalf of the teachers' union and the school, I wanna speak in opposition to the proposal. Uh proposed change in PTO to sick time. The understanding is that the board may or may not be looking to move the staff from twelve days. A PTO time per year to ten and two. Or nine and three as as a discussion. Uh just to kind of make sure we're 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 pointing at what we're doing. The district objective is. Our commitment to equity supports fostering a welcoming, inclusive and barrier free environment with urgency, accountability and compassion. Educational equity is achieved by acknowledging that systemic institutional policies and practices can access barriers to success. Examining, interrupting and removing barriers will create conditions that lead to accept access and opportunity for every individual, right? That is our our mission. Um and that is for every student, but I believe that's also for any individual that walks through these doors in the district. It's important to all of us. So we present this opposition in the spirit of district equity nonnegotiables, where we listen to each other, we teach and learn from each other and we share power. Second, in a similar vein, we wanted to provide some alternative solutions to the alleged problem of teachers not coming to work or. Possibly misusing or abusing their lot of PTO time. While I know you're not engaged with the union today, I hope that you consider some just some just some suggestions before making a permanent change. First, data analysis. In deciding whether a policy change is necessary, we need to ask, what does the data show? The data has got to be compiled, analyzed. And hopefully discussed before decisions are made. So what is the current trend that has created cause for concern? Is it most teachers? Or only handful of teachers or staff that are engaged in alleged misuse? We have approximately a hundred teaching staff. Policy should be driven by what is frequent problem, was a frequent problem based on activity by many staff. If not, the policy is adversely affecting the majority due to the actions of a few. So is it a couple of teachers, maybe possibly abusing, misusing, um going out of their way to use their PTO? Or is it a lot of us? If it's a couple, they should be addressed, they should be talked to, we believe. Second question is, why are they on the coverage list? Um we were shown a calendar type document with names on each day of the week that people were gone. But are these teachers that are out of the building at home on PTO? Or are they serving a different role in a different matter? I have some examples. I'm gonna use myself to start. On September twenty seventh, Gus Kaufman, I'm on the coverage list. My name might be on there. I don't know. I didn't get to examine the document. Um I missed three classes that day because I was setting up for the Glennos Cross Country Meet or Clutch Park. There's a spreadsheet that goes out to all of Glennos. Uh my name says Gus Kaufman. Every part is blacked out, meaning I'm here except for three class period. But if you don't know what that spreadsheet is or examine it, you see simply that Gus Kaufman's out of the building that day, when in fact I'm not. And I'm working in a capacity for the district. Nine twenty, very next day, my name is also on the coverage list. Uh I was lifeguarding. Our lifeguard was out that day. She was at training and we had a swimming, fourth grade swim class in the afternoon. We had to get a sub, we had to get coverage that day so I could be the lifeguard, otherwise the fourth graders weren't to be able to swim that day. On November third, Gus Kaufman, on the coverage list once again, I missed sixty minutes, so about a class and a half. Uh for an athletic director meet, I was in the building. Eleven, three.
I'm not gonna cut you off, so you can you can go.
First column meeting here, I'm just.
It's not a race. Okay, so start what date and.
So for, so nine twenty seven, September twenty seventh was my first example. Where I'm on the coverage list. However, I'm working in capacity for the district setting for the cross country meet, so I missed. Spotted in three classes that. September twentieth, very next day, once again, I'm on the coverage list. It looks like maybe I'm taking another day of PTO. In fact, I missed. Uh one class and I didn't miss it cuz I was lifeguarding, so I studied sub, had coverage for the fourth grade group for my class that was in the gym. While I got some. Eleven, three, uh once again, I'm on the coverage list. I had athletic directors meeting, part of one of the roles I play. So I missed a class and a half, had to pay twenty five dollars to a person to come down sub for my class, so. If you're not really like examining and just looking at names on a spreadsheet, it looks like Gus Kaufman is taking much PTO days, boom, boom, boom. And in fact, I'm here each of those days uh working in different roles for the district.
Not utilizing.
Correct, not utilizing PTO. And I don't know if that's broken down in any.
But you're getting paid to do extracurricular or like your athletic director. Well, is that a Skype then or is that's part of your salary?
Athletic director meetings are always during the day. It's always on Friday, usually the first Friday of the month, whatever. Cross country meet, I gotta get get out there and set it up. Yep, um and just other examples, uh there's IEPs that are almost always scheduled during the day. Teachers have to go to the IEP. Oftentimes, people in the same team have to go sit down at the IEP. We need to pay for coverage of some or. You know, other teachers, we have to pay for coverage for them to go to that meeting. Uh there's teachers' trainings and workshops as well as um cross district collaboration where teams get together. And meet science teachers, all meet at Nicolay, sit down and talk. So. If you're looking at the spreadsheet and you're looking at names on a list, it looks like those people are utilizing PTO cuz they're gone. When in fact, they're just working for the district and just in different capacities other than being in the in the building, right? Which, yeah, it costs money, right? It costs money to have another teacher come in and cover or to have some have a sub filler, right? But the point is, we're we're doing our job. We're not misusing or abusing PTO cuz we're here. Working, it just might look like it because our names are on the list. Other, other point. PTO, why is it important? Here's just a couple of examples. College visits, whether you're taking your son or daughter to college or your son or daughter's at college and you'd like to go see them. Doesn't fall on her sick time, but it sure is nice to have that flexibility cuz. We'll miss our kids. For me personally, I love to go to my kid's uh field day. I go to Indian Hill each day or each year. Uh I I PTO time, so I can take off. No one is sick, but I like to be able to go there. There has to be a sub that covers. I use PTO time. And I get to go up there and be with my kids, be part of the school, be part of that culture, which is a sister district right up in Indian Hill.
Can I ask you a question? How many days do you, would you say you probably utilize those, that personal? And you don't have to answer if you want to, but I guess I'm just wondering like, how many college visits, how many of those sort of extra days are you wanting to utilize on a regular basis?
That would be hard for me to answer cuz these are just examples of what other teachers might, I don't have kids in college. Well, I take it personally because, you know, I collected data, I talked to a lot of the teachers in the district, and these are just things, these are reasons why the PTO is really valuable to us. Right? Uh another part of that is very similar. They have music, music concerts, winter concerts, spring concerts. If I can PTO sometime, I'm not sick, but I'd like to be able to go and watch my kids, whether it's for an hour or two and I have to get coverage. It's it's really nice that district supports me being a parent and me being able to go and be present in my kids' lives, right? That's where that PTO is really, really important and a little bit of flexibility that all of you have offered us in the past, it's important to us, okay? I mean, here's just another example I was given today, elderly relatives out of state, no one is sick, but this person. If they're elderly, you need some flex time. No one is sick, but they wanna be able to go and visit before maybe. You know what I mean? And then here's the most important one, um and I think you already kind of alluded to this a little bit as well. What about the teachers that are not of Christian or Jewish faith? We we have a lot of focus on those two. You know, backgrounds, um but if you're not one of those and you need to be able to utilize. Time to take off, to be with your family, do events, do important cultural events and spiritual events, um no one is sick. We wanna be able to have a flex belly, that PTO time built in and some understanding from the district of why we're.
So do you, do you think you, are you saying you don't get that now? Because I mean, my understanding of like religious discrimination would be that. We have to provide a religious accommodation to somebody who wants to observe a religious holiday or event.
You'd have to use PTO time in order to take off for that type.
You can't take an unpaid.
I would say though that um we have had staff with. Religious reasons that it wasn't a once in a lifetime, they were able to take multiple days off in a row because it was a religious reason. They could use PTO, they could take it up, they, because it wasn't religious, it was a different kind of situation.
How many of us can afford to take an unpaid day?
Well, I think that's an accurate.
They could use PTO somehow to take it up.
Correct, and I understood that, yeah. Uh and that's just to name a few. I mean, there, everyone's got, everyone's an individual, everyone's got a different history, different background. So it's PTO has been just a really nice benefit that we have truly appreciated and as a whole have not. Thought like we've misused or abused. And once again, if we feel like there are individuals, that is a great time. For administrators to sit down and talk with that person and just try to get them realigned to our district values and goals, which is to be present for every student. For administrators to sit down and talk with that person and just try to get them realigned to our district values and goals, which is to be present for every student. Okay, um back to the data, you know, what is the actual cost of, of PTO being used? Like I said before, there's lots of different reasons. People might be gone, whether it's part of being at the district or using PTO for different things. Uh what is the cost of the misuse or abuse of PTO? And, and ultimately, um. You know, we'll get back to this a little bit in just a little bit, is if we go to all sick time. People have to call sick in the morning of and don't have opportunity to plan ahead. Uh we'll be using more staff coverage, which seems to be more expensive than having a teacher on call. And when you're a teacher on call, in our experience, uh if you're calling sick in the morning and you post it in teacher on call, there's very, 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 very few times. That someone actually is able to jump on. Teacher on call seems to be a pretty nice tool for us. When it's planned out in advance, when those subjects, teachers can look down the line to like, hey, in a week or two weeks, we know this person we got and they can jump in and utilize that time.
Would you say, can you just elaborate, have to use sick time? What do you, you're saying under a new policy? What do you, can you clarify?
I'm saying if we, let's say we have two PTO days and then let's say you need a mental health day, you feel it coming.
Sick day is a mental health day.
Correct. But you're gonna have to call in sick in the morning and not be able to plan that sick day out.
Under the new, under the employee handbook that we're looking at, wouldn't a mental health, wouldn't a mental health day qualify as a sick day? Under the employee handbook? That's my understanding.
So would we be able to?
Stop, I'm sorry.
No. The, like, if it's a sick day, can I go in and say, next Friday, I gotta take a mental health day? Or would that be, say, that's PTO? Right? So if it's a sick day that we need to use, I gotta call in in the morning.
Yeah, a mental health day you would call, well, go ahead.
Well, actually, why? I mean, there's a lot of reasons we don't use sick time. It would include medical appointments, or if you are indeed. Engaging in a mental health day, why couldn't you plan ahead just like you would now? Is there?
But you know you're gonna wake up anxious or depressed or like.
But then the same sub burden applies. Like if you wake up on a morning and you realize you need to take a day, then the same sun.
Well, the whole point though is that the, and opportunity to come and talk is just, so we're thinking about these things. Because it's not just cut and dry. Uh these people are all gone and they have to be in the building, so let's take that away. There's lots of different scenarios. And so we're just trying to lay out kind of the different things that we view that we see in case they weren't thought of by, by you guys, right? And then, and final, final data question or point is speaking of data, uh like I said, we got to poll. Uh teachers and pairs across the building. Every teacher pair that had a chance to uh fill out a survey. Said they greatly appreciate the opportunity to have PTO. They, they truly believe that that is the best thing, one of the huge benefits. And I know maybe it doesn't fall under benefit in the teacher handbook, but the thought process of like, man, Glenda River Hills is doing the right thing. They have this huge benefit. They have PTO. We had some little bit of flex in it and they have some true understanding of why as, as individual uh really hits home. And, and that is a hundred percent of the staff that we got back, paraprofessors and, and teachers, said that that is super important. Not a single person said, ah, it doesn't really matter to me.
How many?
Uh in total, seventy-two, about eighty-five, we got back to. So it's, I feel like that data point there is pretty important.
I just have a quick question, which is, you know, obviously, we know what you don't want us to do. But then I see two other options. One is keeping that is, one is something else, right?
Yep. We do, I guess my question is, is this the form to go to the, you know, what would you like instead if we can't keep the whole thing?
Yeah, yeah, bring it.
Bring it.
You guys, we want your voice.
That is our first, what, our first rebuttal. Like you were opening it up.
So this is what I would say. This is what I would say. I'm coming here tonight to kind of say, we, we really believe we'd like to keep it safe. If that's not possible, if you as a board administration is like, no, something's got to change, then I would just request just a little bit of time before twelve twenty or within the next week. To confer with the association, talk to teachers and see what seems reasonable, what seems right for all of us, right? Because the nine and three, oh, all right, fine, you know, that's a little bit morale. Uh there's, so what I'm asking is.
Are we not allowed to do that?
What I'm asking is, could we come?
That was a joke.
Could we come back? Could we come back and?
Where's your husband?
Within the next week or two, sit down at the table and, and say, this is what we as association, we as a staff. Believes would be comparable and understandable and, and like, you know, come into a consensus.
We're gonna keep, I'm gonna keep order.
Yeah.
Gus, is there anything more? Is there anything more that you would like to add?
Um.
I'm sorry, I said the.
Page of stuff. Just, just a little bit, just a few more points, just a few more points.
We want to hear it all.
We want to hear it all. Um, all right, so. That little bit more into it now, over the course of a very short period of time, uh probably less than five, about less than five years. Uh we have experienced a great change in, in our lead policy, as it seems that many staff. This change has been erased to the bottom as we chase policy that may or may not fit our values. Or attracting and retaining staff and providing a benefit that honors teach professionals. Example, under Larry Smalley, we have this PTO system put in place. And then we had another administration come in and right away, um kind of left the PTO alone, but knocked the, the sick day bank. From ninety to forty-eight for new hires, which is a pretty significant hit in the, you know, gut. If you're a young teacher looking to accumulate days so you can raise a family and you want to stay here, we want to retain those young teachers. Forty-eight days, you basically have a, a child below your FMLA. Both of your days and then wait five years to try to build that back up. We're nineties and that's nice bank. Same can be said for older teachers that might be experiencing some health problems. Uh you know, you, you go through and have a procedure. Um forty-eight days is gone pretty fast versus the ninety days in the bank. It is, it's, it's a nice padding to have. It does not really cost the district. Any money just to have it ninety. Doctor Moser, Moser slashed them and we felt that. Okay, and now here we are again, looking back at it again, saying, well, let's take the PTO away and let's give them, you know, ten and two or nine and three sick days. It just gets to be a little bit demoralizing. And don't get me wrong, we appreciate you as a board, we appreciate administrators. But there comes to a point like, ah, again, we're looking at a cut. Do we have a voice? Are they gonna listen to us? And right now you are. And I'm just gonna say thank you. Thank you. We really do appreciate it. Um I just want to go through this. How about this? I'll, I'm gonna skip to the end, all right?
Will you send us this? Will you also send us?
We waited two hours for you to represent.
You mean you enjoyed a board meeting for?
They're just their families.
We did too. I did too. I showed up here too.
I was leaving the house and I said, boys, just start decorating the tree. I'll be home a little bit. And they said, no, we're not gonna do that without.
No, please finish. Please say what you want to say.
I, I was simply gonna, the next port was gonna be what Nicolay does and they're actually at a nine and three system, which is nice. But we can do better, right? We can do better than what Nicolay is doing, I believe, and we appreciate, you know, opening that up. So here's my last couple of ports. What options have been discussed or explored? If we're looking at why teachers are using PTO and if you feel they are being misused. My, my argument does not, but if you still feel like they're being misused. Um have we explored or talked about any of the long-term incentives to keep our days? Is there a payout at the end of career or payout at the end of the year? To keep those days, which I believe would be impactful. It would be a light in the tunnel. People be like, you know what? I'll take that time later because this is important and they feel valued because they know that they're coming in, even if they're feeling entitled, even if they're a little sick. Even if they're a little mentally anxious or worn out, we're still gonna come and put the time in face to face with the kids. Um. We heard from the administration, that's a change in wording and it really won't make much of a difference. Well, I beg to differ and the question would be, then why change it? Uh we really believe that uh there's a negative impact, um where you have divine staff between new and senior staff, kind of going back to that ninety, forty split. Uh we have less flexibility, which as I said, we truly appreciate. And I already kind of alluded to this one too, uh we'll no longer be able to really plan out our time where we'll be calling in in the morning. Which puts the school a little bit more of a tailspin if you have a few people call in the morning versus something that was planned out, knowing that this mental, it's just like you're building up. And that, that PTO flexibility has an impact. And we kind of already talked about this. Here's in my mind, the most important thing. This district, from school board all the way down to every single kinder, this district has prided themselves and shown a very progressive and forward-thinking policy. We stand out as a district, district that does what is right for each and every individual that walks through the doors and we accept and celebrate all from top down. We are not the district that needs to follow suit and do what others do. We are the district setting an example and showing others the right way to do things. We are the district that needs to continue to be true to ourselves, true to our values. By simply taking all this into thought process, having a discussion about it and coming up with the best compromise and the best plan for you. And for the teaching staff and paraprofessors. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to speak next? Connection to. Hello, excuse the foot, the shoe being off. Somebody needs to see a doctor, but I'm that teacher who's gonna be here. Okay, I will consider the classroom, okay? Um and I say that, Michelle Young.
Thank you.
M I C A J L L E, Young, Y O U M G. Speaking as an individual, I contemplated whether or not I would say anything. But after listening to Gus, I decided maybe I need to say something. Hoping to the board, Madam Chair, that you will take it to consideration how important the existing PTO is. Now, I came to Glen Hills because I had no other choice, okay? I am from Milwaukee Public Schools. I was proud to be part of Milwaukee Public School, moved into a support position. In the five, three, two, oh, six area code, uh high crime area. It took me coming thirty seconds from twenty gunshots to say, I can't do this anymore. So I was blessed to have Jen, between professional development and Jen Oliva. On that particular day, when I said, I gotta get out, okay? They said, we got a sixth grade science position. I said, give me an interview. They said, don't worry about it. The principal is coming to see our presentation. Uh don't tell Ms. Young, but she didn't know. I was giving her an interview on the spot, so that she can give me a call. But what I had no intentions of leaving Milwaukee Public School. Because I was there for a reason, but I had to leave because for the first time, then in twenty-one years, I valued who I was. Okay, my district refused to move me because they felt you would be good for these kids. I knew I would be good for the kids, but would I be good for myself? What did I leave behind? I left behind about twelve hundred hours of sick time. That I did not use. Why did I not use it? Because I was banking it. I was banking it because then MPS's policy, post-retirement, you get healthcare for life. Okay, so that was an incentive for me. If you choose to change the current procedure, what incentives will you have in place? For me, I lost it. So right now, you mentioned Ms. Bailey. What are we doing with our PTO time? Well, in March, mid-March of this year, I did research. I'm going to Washington DC to present research I did this summer. Research that I'm bringing into the classroom. Is that Glen Hills business? No, it's not. It's Michelle Young's personal business. Okay, because if I'm going to make improvements in my classroom, I gotta continue to do what I need to do outside of the classroom. So working with UW Madison, I wish I had some water. Working with UW Madison, they want me to come to Washington DC to present. I'm using my personal time for that. Okay, two days. Okay, also, because I did come here, oh, and I take days off, I do have that college student. So if they have to go do research, I gotta take off. So I'm reserving my sick days for my daughters who are at UW Madison, but. Um I gotta hold my days, the little ones that I do have, because I'm being sued by MPS. Because I left after August first, okay? So it's like, hmm, you want to sue me for three thousand dollars? Well, guess what? I left you about sixty-two thousand, so I'm doing a countersuit. Win or lose, I'm gonna go through it because I want people, the board, I want you to know that. When we have this time, we are using it effectively, okay? And you need to know, I took the short end of the stick. You switch the policy as you have, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm not gonna do a repeat of what I did in PS and lose all that time. Thank you. Excuse me. My mouth just got dry all of a sudden. I ask you, when you make a decision, I want you to think about me. Like many of them, I'm that teacher. I'm gonna show up every day. And when Gus has to leave or somebody else has to leave, I'm gonna cover. Because I appreciate being at Glen Hills because we get two preps. I didn't get two preps before. So when I go in and I have to cover for a teacher because they need to take care of something, I'll suck. I'll suck. Okay, I know we have a colleague who's a maternity leave. Uh whom I asked, we gotta come in, you gotta come to Glen Hills, but she got a baby. Okay, she told me, she says, I have a doctor's appointment. And I, and she said that uh she needs the last hour off. And I was like, girl, I got you, I got you. I'll cover for you if she has no more time. Okay, but she was forced to use all of her maternity leave or her sick time in the beginning. Instead of going simply unpaid, which I remember doing. So board. Please, please think of me when you make a decision, because you have a lot of teachers who um. Will not take time off, okay? Because they realize how valuable it is to be in front of the kids and I'm one of them. I would walk around with one shoe off, okay, before I consider whether or not I'm gonna take off. Or if I take off, I'm gonna try to do it when it is part-time or sometime like that. But I want you to remember, I lost twelve hundred hours. I'm fighting, okay, with a countersuit. Win or lose, I'm fighting for the teachers and MPS so they don't experience the same thing that I went through. Because I decided to hold those hours. I've come here, I don't get anything. I get nothing, okay? Do you understand? Because I came after two thousand eighteen. Okay, so there's no um incentive or anything for teachers like me, okay? So when you make that decision, keep up, keep, keep, give us, let us keep that personal time as it is. Let us use it how we choose to use it, okay? Because personal time to me is a benefit. And that's the biggest benefit, the only thing I have right now. So please take that into consideration. Uh I'm gonna.
And I think you had your hand up first, but then I'll cut to you.
Parent. Name it else, you call me, I'm Natasha Housie. I have children that are at Parkway. I reside at sixteen thirty-three West Bender, Glendale, Wisconsin. Um it's kind of unique to hear you guys fighting about PTO, saying that I'm from a little bit of a different era. So I work pretty commonly when we have PTO. Well, no, it, it was unique, long story short. So this is what I will say. I couldn't fathom working with so many kids every day and I have my own kids, we having children in the Glendale School District. But to stay at home or with someone else's child all day and not be able to say, I need a day off on Thursday. I took off into my personal time. If I decide to sit in my hundies and watch TV with no kids around, that's at my discretion. I honestly think they deserve that. Like, they're very deserving of it and for you to dictate the terms and conditions of how they use their time. Just isn't American. Like, what happened to for him? Like, you're really not giving that leverage. To even make it appealing to someone to want to come to this school district and where's the work morale from? What happens to the morale in the process of saying, hey, this is the incentive and now you're snatching it away? People don't want to deal with that working environment and it can become hostile. You're going to create angry teachers. Because people are going to need time off and you're not gonna take it or what's gonna happen is it's. I'm on Friday, I'm on Friday, I'm on Saturday. Like, you're gonna create a frenzy of, hey, we had nine teachers calling because everybody wanted the same day off. It's avoidable. Just give them the time that's there because it'll stop you from butting heads on the back end. It doesn't make sense to do or remove the PTO at all. And I'm, I'm literally just neutral. I'm completely neutral. Um because for me, having a child that is on a special needs spectrum, I would hate for. Three of his teachers to call in because he probably only likes three of the teachers that call in. So it's a real rough day around here. And those are things that need to be taken into consideration when you are working with that, they burn out their human. And dictating how they use their time isn't realistic. I don't even understand why they would take it from ninety days down to forty-five. It, it makes sense saying. It not unless you wrote a policy. Not unless you wrote a policy, say, hey, we do the ninety days, they can't be utilized, and this time it should be utilized or capped for these type of reasons or unforeseen circumstances. To me, would be a little more comforting. Um, it makes more sense versus, we give you forty-five days, and hey, if you have a baby, good luck. We don't know what to tell you. It doesn't make sense when you're actually in it to teach, and they understand that taking the job role that they're taking. So, me as a parent, I actually am all for the PTO thing. I think everyone is in need of mental health days, may they use it for mental health days, may they use it for minding their business, may they use it for going to see their great-grandpa across the country. It's at their discretion, no one necessarily wants to always have to use the same days that the kids are out of school in order to get a break. Because you don't get a break from your kids when they're out of school with you. You don't, you, you don't get, there's no break. I'm always a parent, if I'm not a parent, I'm a teacher, so where is the me time in the midst? That's, that's my take, and thank you for hearing.
Um, anyway, I live at the College of Society, at Parkway. Um, I think a piece that's been missing that I haven't heard said yet is if there's PTO. And there's, let's say, an appointment or a school family obligation or event or whatever it may be, I can take an hour off or two hours off. If there are sick days, I'm taking the whole day off.
Yeah.
What's best for kids? Me being gone an hour or two or me being gone the whole day? So I think that piece we need to really think about. Um, and then the other piece that I'm thinking about is when or if the board were to make a change, it affects all staff. And I know the association got together and we decided to represent all certified teachers. I had Paris who came to me and said, can we take the poll too? Can we please take the poll? And I'm like, sure. Every single person that turned in the poll said, please keep PTO the way it is. Every single person. And I think for them to initiate that, and a lot of times when we look at, and I can speak for Parkway, the absent list, it mainly is Paris. Then I think we need to address that with them as well, and not just the teaching staff, and I feel like that's kind of where it's being targeted right now. Um, at least that's how we feel, whether or not that was the intention. So I think we need to make sure that we're addressing all employees and also addressing the fact that some of our employees are outsourced. And they have different requirements, and they're still on our absent list. So back to Gus's point, when you're looking at the absent list, they're not all Glendale employees. So make sure you pick that detail apart as well. Thank you.
Give me your hand up, Ms. Avalos.
Oh, and go ahead.
Okay, Katie Avalos, five, seven, one, five, Dr. Forest Drive. Like, I work in the private sector, I don't work in schools. Um, I was just, I was searching a year ago, the trend in the private sector is PTO. Like, you use it for what you need to. If you get sick and you don't have PTO left, then, you know, you don't get paid. And there's different ways the company handle that. I don't feel like this should be another issue where teachers are getting dinged because they're teachers. I feel like there's enough of that that happens, like, the pay rate is not on par with the public sector, there's a lot of areas, teachers take a thing for being teachers. And I feel like this is one area where we can let them actually have what is the current norm for employment.
I just have one quick comment, Jennifer Clark, I'm a teacher in the district, but I also live fifty-six, fifty-eight, or Stanton, in Glendale. Um, being a part of this district has been amazing, and that PTO has been a definite, um, way that I felt valued as an educator. It's one way that I felt treated as a professional. Um, and it, it also, um. Speaks volumes to how much the school board and the district values us. With that said, I strongly recommend that consideration of. Changing, making some of those changes to something that we strongly value, what that's going to do to morale overall. Um, and, and many teachers that I have spoken with, um, said it would be enough to make them happy to leave. So when we're trying to, like, and I agree with everything that was said, and amazing, um. But when we're trying to look at longevity and maintaining quality staff, and you're talking about, like, being out for one day, well, what about when we're having that mass exodus of teachers from year to year, trying to find a place that they wanna call home? Um, I, I made a decision a long time ago that this was my home, I wanted to stay here, um, because I valued it so much here. But when you start shifting things like that, i- it's gonna have a bigger ripple effect than maybe saving a little bit on budget. And I would be really concerned to, or I'd be very interested to look at, what is the breakdown in, um, cause for this change? What are the driving factors, um, overall? And then also, you know, crunching some of those numbers, is it really a, a big problem, or is it just for a few? And then if it is something that's gonna help, help offset budgetary concerns, what would that breakdown be? Because when I look at my schedule, um, I have a resource class, I teach five classes in a day, and I have a duty. So that is, if I'm doing the math correctly now, my brain doesn't work anymore, seven slots that need to be filled. And I'm one that likes to plan ahead for things if I can. Of course, you know, I told it in October, and that was out the window, but, um. I have a personal day coming up, I was able to plan ahead, teachers on call picked that up. If I would have to call in the morning of, Bella's scrambling to cover seven slots at a cost of, again, if my math is correct, a hundred and fifty dollars. And my recollection, teacher on call is less than that, so I guess.
Fifty, fifty dollars.
Are you talking about internal teacher coverage?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five coverage is twenty-five hours.
So twenty-five.
But you would be paying out.
For seven preps.
More.
No, yeah, you would, you'd be paying, it would be a higher expense to cover last minute, which is usually what happens when someone calls in last minute and wasn't planned, and we have, like. For example, I'm off the eighteenth, I have a teacher on call that's coming in, I think, if I remember, was it like a hundred and twenty-ish or something? Um, to pay that sub, but if I would call in the morning of, it's a hundred and fifty to pay internal staff to cover that. So I guess I would really, I, I, the, the, the science minded me, I show me the data, because right now it doesn't make sense. On top of compounding with the morale and, and really trying to cultivate a culture of staff that are all in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Exena Perez, Smith, five, five, two, eight, North. Um, five, five, two, eight, North Twenty-Sixth Street. Uh, as a former employee of the district and as a former support staff member, using PTO days or not being able to use PTO days during entire weeks of no work. So we're looking at, um, just had the weeks of Thanksgiving where there was conferences. Support staff don't work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we don't, excuse me, we don't work, but we're also not paid. Thursday, you're paid for the holiday, no work, no pay on Friday. It's not four days, I cannot use PTO there. Um, there is the Jewish holidays and beginning of the, uh, religious holidays and beginning of the school year. For certified staff or, you know, that are salaried, but hourly staff, it's not a time to use PTO. It's not a paid day. Um, you know, just looking at the district's policy on that, when it comes to, if you said, um, employees, so.
Thank you.
I'm here for more than three of you.
All right.
I got to sign it.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Hi, Samantha Baker, I live, uh, in Milwaukee, uh, on Humboldt Avenue, if you need my full address. Um, I'm a new teacher to Glen Hills, just started this year. Uh, and as somebody who's coming from a, a varied background of international teaching in several different countries and continents. Uh, coming back to Milwaukee and applying for jobs, uh, I very easily could have gotten a job in Milwaukee Public Schools where I worked before I left. And I would have been paid probably ten thousand dollars more to work there than working here. Um, however, there are a lot of benefits, uh, to working here in, uh, in Glen Hills. Uh, one of them, of course, was the PTO, which I was very pleased to find out about when I was offered my contract and started looking into the terms of it. Uh, I will also say that part of the, um, uh, benefit of working here, I know from somebody who was working here before me as a friend. Uh, and the morale that goes into, uh, the staff. In just the, like, four days, we know about this possible change in the policy. We hear it around the school, people are upset about it. There's, I don't think enough can be said about the change in morale that would come to, uh, a policy change like this. And I also would like to say that, uh, I'm a single person who is rarely sick. So for me, having PTO that I can use as I wish is something that just is kind of like a little cushion. I've only used one day so far, I don't have plans to use all twelve, but knowing that I possibly could, without having to lie and call in sick on the morning of. Uh, it's just. It just gives me, like, a real sense of, like, breathing room. That if the time comes down the line that I need that day, I can plan ahead, make my details and very well-resourced subplans. Get a sub to submit to, uh, take, take the, take the day from whatever that statement is called. See, I haven't used it, so. And just know that my class is going to be, uh, handled, that the resources are there, and that I haven't had to just. I'm sick on the morning because I need a day. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that, and I think a lot of the staff in the district would also not feel comfortable doing that. So instead of planning ahead and taking the days that we need, we will either do that thing, call in sick and not really be sick and feel guilty about it. Or just get burnt out and continue to work, uh, through that time that we really should be taking a day to do whatever it is that we need to.
Beck Williams, I live in Milwaukee, I, uh, work at Parkway, I'm a second grade teacher, I would say, you know, even about one thing. Uh, was, would say, like, what Samantha just said about, like, making sure if we can plan ahead to get that stuff, what we also think about is we're thinking about our students. And that they're at the forefront, so if I can plan on taking a half-day next week, I already have, uh, Jeannie Bennett pulling in, so I know which lesson to be, you know, prepping for. So if it would be math, all the resources are out, and regardless if it's a whole day, my whole thing is when I am doing lessons, playing, what is best for students, what is the best for subs? Um, so that's just the thing, I, we always just think about planning ahead and what's the best for students, and that's what we live by in this district since I started five years ago. And that's what I do, I want my kids to get the best educational experience, whether I'm there or if I had to take, you know, a day off to do something or go for an appointment.
There we go.
Speak at anything. Um, Valerie Prans, I'm a support staff at Parkway, and I'm also a Glendale resident.
Um, state your address, please.
Sir, sixty-nine, forty-nine, North Beth Marley.
Thanks.
Um, to piggyback off of what's in that has said, and what some others have said, is that when a sub is not able to get off. You guys pay the internal staff a stipend to cover. Certified, correct, I need to certify staff that's paid a stipend to cover certain classes. As support staff, I has covered music class a few times, I do not get some stipend. I cover when my spent teacher cannot get a sub, I do my duties and I do his duties. I get no stipend for doing double the work in a day or in a couple days. Sometimes that involves not being able to take breaks, sometimes that involves having to work through my lunch. I don't get any of that, so actually at that point, you guys are ahead, because you're not paying.
No, that's illegal.
To cover that, so then I'm covering that position, and I'm not getting anything above or beyond for that. So that's just a stipend, I wanted to make.
Thank you. Were, were there other hands?
Okay, I really appreciate everybody taking time to be here, taking time to speak up, you know, plan on it. Um, we will now move into more discussion of this policy.
Are we doing one at a time?
We could do that, yeah, two minutes, or is that what you'd like to do? We still.
I, I read.
This policy.
We're, we're gonna, because I feel like you would benefit from hearing us discuss it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's also why you're here, okay, okay. Uh, yeah, we could do, I mean, generally, I think for policy, what makes the most sense is to, to go one at a time. Um, does anybody want to start?
Well, we're starting with this one, right?
This policy.
Yeah, I'll start.
Yes, thanks.
Okay.
You, yes.
Okay, so, um. I do come from an educational environment, I know I made a note in our policies, like, two days of PTO, if that's the model, seems far too few. Um, my model has four, most years I've not used four, occasionally, I've wished I had five, that was exactly what I put in the notes. Um, so if that is the model that we adopt, I do think we need to be more generous with the number of PTO days, period. Um, I think the other thing I could, I had hoped for in this discussion was a data analysis and a financial analysis that really made us aware of what is the impact? Because. I think your points are really valid, but then we need, like, it's the five whys again, right? Like, what is the impact, how is it derived? There are several points that I think were brought up that come into the conversation, for instance, how our mental health days access. You know, is there a reason that there's a thought that they can't be asked for ahead of time? Because, yeah, I'm just saying, like, we, I mean, clearly that's the thought, so we need to clarify, right? Um, and so I, I think for my part, at this point in time, I'm interested in having a clarified conversation that has a lot more details. Before we make a true decision on the policy change.
Thank you. You're gonna set a precedent, and I'm really bad if you don't clap out.
Don't clap for me.
I'm just kidding, no, I like, actually, I kinda like them.
Isn't it amazing that we have an audience tonight?
I know, really. I'm feeling a little anxious.
I'm nervous that I wanna, yeah.
I appreciate engagement, and we know this is a very important topic, so, um, does anybody want to discuss their?
Not to indicate where I lean on this or, or how. Paul, are we going on?
No. Oh. First, you don't have to.
Oh.
We will be asked there, if, there will be a motion where we will possibly approve all of these policies as a first reading or pull some of these policies out and not approve.
Well, that, that we're gonna get to, which is that thi- this is a first reading anyhow. So, I mean, we can leave a second reading to implement anything that we do.
Hmm.
Um, in which case we can make a change, but, I mean, doesn't merit, you know, uh, additional consideration. Aside from, you know, the bulk of these luminous policies that we have to provide, um. I, I guess, you know, just to make the motion, I would like to approve, and we'll, we'll.
We don't have any motions here, but maybe we don't.
We do, because, well, what I was gonna do is, I was gonna make a motion to approve first reading of everything except for this policy.
Oh.
Um, and then to, uh, we can address, you know, this policy separately, but, um, and we had three thousand, four thousand, six thousand, uh, first readings. You know, we, we have, you know, some additional, you know, comments on some of those, but it's first reading, I would just like to get those things out of the way first. Um, so everything but for, uh, and, and the policy number again there, was there a policy number?
Uh, thirty-four, thirty-two.
Thirty-four, thirty.
Two.
So you're making a motion to.
So I'm making a motion for, uh, to approve first reading on everything but for, uh, three, four.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Okay, newbie, right?
Yeah.
So I'm clueless.
Hmm.
Um, aren't you happy, like, I'm clueless and I'm on your board, be accepted? Okay, so.
I like that you're saying.
Hey, so do we need to approve a first reading, or are you moving that we approve the policies?
No.
Per our current policy, if we want to change a policy, we have to have two readings.
Okay.
First reading, you have to approve, it has to be approved in the first reading and then there might be feedback on that first policy.
There's things I have questions about.
For a second reading and if it passed, it would be, you know, implemented with whatever caveat you might put up. So you have to have two readings for a policy.
I might be out of order. I don't know how this works either, but I did have a question on one of the other policies.
Well, yeah, but we're not there yet. We're gonna finish this one and then we're gonna walk through them.
Okay, I just, I was hearing that you were gonna do a free approval to say okay to all of them except.
Well, there has, there's not a motion yet, but again, a first reading doesn't imply.
There is a motion.
I did, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
And we'll see if there's a second.
And, 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 you know, frankly, all these policies could be, you know, adjusted or tweaked and typically speaking, what we do with a lot of policies is. Uh, when for a second reading, often in our first reading, we'll raise some question asked uh and have some issues uh discussed, but. This policy seems to be taking, you know, of our attention. And I, my hope is, you know, we can, as a board, which we've done in the past, especially given pressing need, kind of. Get some policies on paper for a lot of reasons that, you know, don't need to be explained at the moment. That it might just get more expedient to address all those policy name potential changes in the second reading. Uh, and to focus on this policy here right now separately, just to get those out of the way or else we're gonna be here till midnight. So that, that, so that to read for my motion, I made the motion.
I seconded.
Pause, yeah, then discussion, right?
So just a point of clarification.
Yeah.
So you're suggesting that other than this policy.
Right.
We would approve first reading and not discuss other policies tonight.
Oh.
Correct.
No, we can't.
Oh, that wasn't intent. I'm.
Yeah, I mean, we discussed to our hearts content, but I just wanna get a motion on those, because I think it'd be quicker discussion.
Yeah, we can, I think now we discuss everything but three, four, three, two.
Yeah.
You don't want us to discuss any of the other policies.
They don't want to discuss, I figured it'd be quicker.
So I think he's saying now you can.
Pause, pause. We need, I need to just, we have to restate this motion, because I wanna understand clearly. Can you re, can you state your motion?
Okay, I would like to prove first reading of everything of the uh policy three, four, three, two.
And three thousand, not four thousand, six thousand. Three thousand.
I seconded, so we can have it.
So there is a motion to approve the first reading of all policies minus the three, four, three, two, and there is a second, which means now we discuss. All of those policies. But how, okay, that just cuts off discussion of this policy if you want us to.
And so, I mean.
Or you can take, we could, I could make a motion to table that out till later. And then come back to, well, table it on the table for tonight, remember?
Yeah.
And then we would come back to discussion of the PTO. But I understand what you're thinking.
The, the intention to separate with the week from the chat, basically, the one from the other, so uh, you know, i- i-. At, at the very least, uh, then, um, if I can't make. I mean, right now, so we have a motion second, so I guess the only thing I do is uh to make a friendly.
You can move to table.
Wait.
It's on to make friendly uh motion to amend, uh friendly amendment to uh table.
There's no such thing.
There's no friendly amendment, that's not true.
Well, what if we, what if we discuss the ones we want?
Listen, there's a motion, there's a second, so we need to discuss whether we're going to approve.
No, we can discuss all these policies now, except three, four, three, two.
Sure, but I wanna finish talking about this one. And then we can go through whether you wanna discuss all the other ones. Oh, but you've excluded it.
Then just rule out, rule my motion is out of order.
Call the question.
Yeah.
Well, if you call the question, we're voting on everything.
That's true, but then it'll be shut down, so I'll second the motion, call a question, but we need four out of five.
Is your goal to continue discussion of PTO?
My goal is to finish our discussion because only one person has spoken.
Right.
And.
So I make a motion, I make a motion to table Andy's motion. Until after the discussion of PTO is concluded. Second.
On, uh, any objections to doing that?
No, no.
Alright, great. Let's just finish this discussion and we will get, we will get through it. Thank you.
So that motion is pending, but we just.
Let's, let's, so if there's anything that has not been said by, by staff, there's anything we want to say as a board now while we have people here. This would be your time to say it. I have questions for, you know, out around this policy and also um, like actual things, but. So, and Carla, I want you to.
Oh.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I have a lot of mixed feelings about all of this, because I hear everything the teachers are saying. I get it. Um, I took out the equity lens and I thought about this. If I tried to take a satellite view, I take, tried to take a personal view. Uh, so I just, since we're all here, I wanna share with you what I'm thinking about, knowing I, I have just reached no decision in my head. I'm trying to be very. Open-minded, but these are the things I think about. Number one, you know, I'm a mental health advocate. You know I care about that, but we call everything mental health days now, and it's a misuse of the term, in my opinion. Meaninging a break is not the same as a mental health day. If I wake up tomorrow and I'm too anxious to go into work, that's a mental health day. I call in, I say, I can't come into work today. I'm not able, just like if I have an infectious disease. Just like if I broke my ankle. That's a sickness-based mental health day. What you're describing is something different to me and I totally get it. But I worry about calling that a mental health day. It just, I know it's just the lingo of our times, that I feel like. Mental health gets bandied around in a lot of different ways and I would like us to have clarity around that. I'm just processing that, listening to you talk. I don't know where I'm gonna land on it, but it's just given me a lot to think about, because I do think. Whole body wellness is critical, right? But I also think in our equity discussion of all this, we need to think about students. A lot of you have said put students first. So when I think about teachers' absences from the schoolhouse. You know, like the, one of the examples you used, Gus, was like going to visit my elderly mom. Well, we have a lot of vacations built into our school year, like I could go on fall break or spring break, right, if I was a teacher. Married to a, a man who's been a professor for seventeen years, I mean. And I know many of you, you feel this way. It's absolute primacy, being in the classroom for the teaching days. Everything in our life bends around his teaching days and he has missed countless things for our kids. Because everything bends around his teaching days and it's burdensome some days, but it's the choice to be made, right? And I think, as I listen to you talk, I think some of that is about. Like, if changing PTO days is so demoralizing, then I think we need to do more work on morale around something other than PTO. Clearly, you're not seeing the value you bring to our community. Right? It, it, that, that value that brought you here and this is making me think a lot about how to. Increase that celebration, right? I mean, we've, when I look at the history of what the board's done in the last couple of years, we've. Provided really big market value adjustments for a lot of teachers. We've tried to bump the pay scale up, done a lot of things to show. I mean, we're in a deficit budget with a huge overspend on salary. I mean, we're showing we care about you guys. We wanna put the money there, right? Um, and so into that mix, I hear like, oh god, they're gonna change our PTO days and I think, hold on. Let's take, let's take a salad, satellite view. There's a lot that this board is doing to, to try to make sure you know how much we value you. You know, but I also value the need of students to have um real consistency in teaching. And so I started like thinking to myself, like, my kids in elementary school, if I knew there was a sub, I'd pull them. I didn't send them into school because the sub days just aren't that effective. And for my daughter Jessie, a student who already has significant mental health challenges, those days didn't work, right? So your day with your grandma is a day my daughter doesn't go into school for learning, a child who's already marginalized because of her disability. Right? And so there's a different part of that equity story, right? And so I asked myself, this is harsh, and so you guys know me, you know, where I'm just, I'm rummaging through this in my head, right? Well, if you had to stand up in front of your class and say, this year I'm gonna take twelve days off. Some of them are gonna be sick days and some of them are gonna be because I have needs. Those twelve days, I'm not gonna be here for you. I'm gonna find someone else for you if I can. I know we all get vacation, we get breaks, we get summer off, we get winter, but also I'm gonna be gone for twelve days. Can you do that? Can you say that to your students? I don't know, it's awkward, right? I don't know if I'd be able to. And yet I, you know, I get it, I get it. We all have lives, but we also have all these breaks, right? I'm here today. I really need to be home with my family. I left my son in tears. He's having an anxiety attack because it's something that happened at school. I'm not with him, because I'm on this board and this is my commitment. Danielle has missed two birthdays with her kids, because she's been here on Wednesday nights for board meetings. I mean, we get it, right? We get it, the sacrifice you guys are making, but also. We have a thousand students in this schoolhouse and I'm asking myself. You know, how do we? I don't even know how to say it out loud. I want you guys in the schoolhouse, you're incredible teachers. How do I build your morale so that you can be here and build your resilience, so you're not talking every day about mental health days, right? Maybe the problem isn't the PTO policy, but something else. You know what I'm saying? Like, if that's what's gonna break you, there's something a lot bigger going on. So that's kind of what's on my mind. Um, I don't like hearing about people lying to use PTO. I just don't like hearing that. Nobody should be lying. And if that's where heads are going, hmm, I hope we can just. Turn that switch off and not be starting to gain, I'm gonna lie, to use my PTO days. It just, I don't, I don't, I don't like that. And if, I don't, it just worries me. I don't want that to be a culture in our schoolhouses and I understand how having flexible PTO will. Prevent that, but on the other hand, like teacher was saying, you don't wanna do something that makes you feel greasy, right? So we need to make sure we're. Doing what we need to do to not. Encourage people to manipulate the system. So that's all the stuff I'm thinking about. It's just where my head is. Um. I think we need more data. I'm talking for too long, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I just wanna say this, um, I, I, I do think we need more data and I've asked Allison for some of that and I think we should further this discussion. My view is even if there were a change in PTO, like, uh, you said right upfront, I've already talked with Allison about this as well. Nothing can change for this year. It's just really unfair. So there's plenty of time to have this discussion before. July first, right? And I hope we can continue to have it. Um, to those of you who are here, I hope you know. I mean, as a human being, how much I value you. It's just, it's a miserable job being a school board with what we're having to go through this year. And so I, I hope no matter what decision this board votes on, that you know how important you are. To me and to each of my kids and how important it is to me to have you in this schoolhouse as healthy and whole. Um, my wish is that we can find a way to make that happen without you feeling like you have to run out of the building. You know, and take that day off. Um, so I really appreciate you coming and sharing those points. You know, I, I love hearing from you, so thank you for being. Don't, don't clap.
Don't clap in the car, let's go. I don't know.
Um, I mean, I don't really have much profound to say. Um. I know, uh, I don't have, yeah, so I mean, I, I was a teacher. I taught for six years. Um. Yeah, uh, you know, and so when people talk about mass exoduses, uh, I get a little skeptical, however. Uh, one of the breaking points for me for quitting teaching was the fact that I couldn't go or they gave me, again, the principal was super supportive, so. If this gets anywhere.
Recorded.
He's, he, he was, principal was super supportive, but I got a lot of grief for even requesting. Uh, a day off uh for my best friend's wedding uh on a non-student contact day. Um, and it ended up, they let me go. I had to be at school for the first half, then I had to make up the four hours during spring break. Um, so, no, their wedding was on a Friday. And it was, it was horrible. It was, I mean, not horrible, no, no. People, people, people have, I was gonna be there over spring break anyway, but it was like. It was like, wow, that, that doesn't, that doesn't feel very nice. Again, other people have much uh worse experiences than that. Uh, so I, I don't, I don't wanna say horrible was the wrong word, it just didn't, it didn't make me feel like a professional. Um, so there's that extreme, right? Uh, where it's literally only sick days and personal business is not defined as. You know, a personal day. Now, that policy has obviously changed based on what you posted on Board Dogs, because you look. You can look up where I worked last. And again, the principal was incredible, so. He was, he really was. No, I just, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna, uh. Make, make it seem that, because he wasn't, he was, he was incredible and helped me through it. But, uh. I, I quit teaching and it wa, I didn't quit teaching because of that, but it definitely added. Uh. You know, to that stress or to that, the reasoning behind leaving. Um. So where am I going with that? Um. Now I work in the private sector and I get about thirty days off, so I get, it's, uh. Yeah, about thirty days. I think ten of them are scheduled, uh, kinda like yours. And, um. So I don't get as many days off, but I get paid significantly more uh than I earned while teaching. So, you know, there's that trade-off, because people talk about scheduled breaks. Uh, and I do know, you know, new teachers are affected more than uh more experienced teachers too. Because, you know, with only CPI raises, you know. You know, a new teacher's coming in and earning forty-eight thousand, well, they're gonna earn forty-eight thousand for the rest of their career in twenty, twenty-three dollars. Versus someone working today who's only getting CPI raises, but they're earning seventy, eighty thousand. You know, that, that. Quality of living is not gonna be the same for newer teachers than older teachers. So I get conflicted when we're talking about PTO, because. I mean, the younger teachers are not, you know, paid as well, even though they're doing the same job. Um. So, um. Anyway, but, you know, I also left my teaching with forty-nine and a half days. Unused and I think it paid out. Uh, it was just, it's gone. Right? So over four, over six years, I used five and a half uh days. Um, however, I was also young and didn't have a family. So I was able to, you know, be there every day, pretty much. Um. So, uh, when it comes to. You know, our policy, it's obviously very generous. Um. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, uh, but it is more generous than. Any other district around here. However, uh, this might not be. Uh, the battle we're uh fighting.
Those are actually, those were some profile thoughts.
Were they? I don't know.
They had some profile thoughts, so they definitely, yeah.
Um, okay.
Hey, Candy, right? Did she go? No?
Nice try.
Bring it.
I, I mean, I, I, I did kinda, you know, begin this and we just got to the handbook, which is, you know, I, I think that. It's probably a little bit ambitious to have this settled by December, particularly if we're not going to have. Uh, you know, uh, any of the changes to handbook, any effect for the current year. Um. You know. I am troubled by the issue of morale and by the issue that we see in papers regarding. Uh, you know, and, and is it, what is lowering uh teacher salaries effective, you know, uh, now? Into that they're really earning less on their inflation than, you know, what they were. You know, whatever what we act had, uh, whatever the headline was in the paper, uh, you know, about a week ago. Um. I also recognize that there are people who are leaving and I see, you know, that there are people leaving the pressure, there, and there's a variety of reasons for that. Um, you know, and, and yet at the same time, to be fair to this district and this administration. I, I have to say that, um, I think that this board. Uh, in this administration has always tried to do what it can to be acted uh a way that upholds uh the dignity of teaching profession. That may not always translate, that may not always be apparent, but I, I know that we are a group of parents. Uh, we are educators uh in the administration with experiences, and so it's very important for us to do that. And. I have been looking at this as a matter of, is this just a reduction? For reduction sake, is it a reduction for legitimate financial? Uh, reason? It's not a reduction for reduction sake. There is some legitimate financial basis, but really, I mean, there were issues. A few administrators ago, um, that led us to work on modifying, uh, this, uh, app. And I think that there is some sense in trying to have a oops. I don't wanna say equality. I don't wanna say substantive, you know, I, you know, I don't wanna say identicality. But I think that, you know, that, that it makes sense to have some general consistency and maybe we're not quite there. But is that a compelling reason to change something? I guess what I'm trying to figure out in my mind is. What are we getting on the other side? You know, how does this balance out? And so I. If it's, if I'm being asked to approve this policy today, as is, I. I would need more time. I, I, I would, I would need to understand, you know, what other options. There might be out there. But, you know, I also wanna say that, I mean, I had been here through the pandemic. I've been here before that. And, and I feel like, you know, as a district, we've done a lot. And so. Speaking directly to Carla's point about, you know, what is, you know, going on underneath the surface maybe and, and. I mean, it seems like. You've got a real issue with anything that we do that might be a competing interest. If everything always. Ends up being a morale issue. Then we'll never make any changes. I'm not saying that morale is not important or that is not real or it's not valid. But it's also, if we do make changes, some, one of many things that we as a board have to consider and that we hope teachers understand. Um, and, and also. In spite of the lack of Act Ten and lack of, you know, union that can, uh, collectively bargain. I, I do hope for some collaboration, understanding in, in that process. And so I hope it doesn't be an antagonist process. So. I would like to listen to other ideas. I'm not, uh, set on what I would wanna do, but I would not want to, uh, do it just today.
Thanks, Sydney. Okay, I don't, I'm gonna try not to be redundant. Okay. But I wanna outline, I know, I think there's a clear call for data analysis, a breakdown, and that's, that's been asked before you guys asked for it. So know that we were thinking of that. Um, but you've confirmed that that's an important part of this discussion. Uh, financial analysis of, and breaking it down by the right. Have, using the right information in those, right? Uh, I think it's important that we talk about and get some communications out around mental health days, how they are. Uh, excess and, and that's a discussion, another discussion, right? Because there may be some differing opinions. Um, I wanna do more digging around religious observation and PTO. And I think the overarching question for me, for all of this is how do we, how does this? Work through our equity lens? I know you guys talk about equity a lot, we, uh, in, as reasonings. So I would, I would walk through our equity lens and I would do it for all, all of our groups, you know, staff. Students, community and family. And, uh, what I've been hearing, what I think I'm hearing is that. The, there's a root cause of, of wanting this PTO that is related to work-life balance and wellness. And like Carla, I think about. How do we weigh that balance, that need to address that with our staff? And make sure that you feel like you have that flexibility, um. And weigh that with all of the, the thinking about the equity of other things, also budgetary implications, which is why we need data. Um, I think if we are going to change a policy, we have to have a clearly expressed reason why. I think it's a, it's still a little, are we addressing absenteeism? And if, if the data shows we need to do that, is, is changing the policy? Does it do that? I think that actually we probably need some more tools and mechanisms to address absence outside of changing PTO and that's part of this discussion. Uh, and so you, I hear you say like you're, you're kinda strapped right now to talk to people about absences that you, you know. So I have a question around how PTO accrues that we can talk about later and sort of like how this plays out, like if you can accrue. I don't know, can you accrue a bunch of PTO and then just use it like? There's no, we're not capping how much you can use in a year or when you can use it currently.
Consecutively or?
No, 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 sorry, yes.
I don't think she's saying.
She means entirely.
She's like over the whole school year. Oh, correct.
There is a cap on using it consecutively. But that didn't exist before. That's, that doesn't currently exist. It's from the last year's handbook? In July, is that the July?
No, actually, you're right. It's not in the handbook. The handbook would not allow for consecutive days, but we added this process to allow for consecutive days.
So it's not in the current handbook. That's what I'm, right?
But we've been following this process.
This is a, right, it's your memorializing process that's currently being followed, but it's not, it's not memorialized in policy or handbook right now. And you're asking us to do that. So that's also part of this consideration. And just thinking about how does that play in with? Is there abuse, is there absenteeism? And, and even if there's not, what is the impact on? So one of the things I weigh is consistency for our students, right? In the classroom, the need for work-life balance for teachers, sufficient compensation. Um, as well as the budget, budgetary implications of any policy, the current, and if we were to change it. So tho- that's like how I'm approaching this. Somebody said, does it matter what we call it? And if the answer is no, then that's, then that's also a discussion to have because. If, if not, if not separating this out doesn't have a, a. The outcome or the impact we want, then it wouldn't make sense. So again, we need to understand the why. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's, those are. I, and the one question I have that's made a discussion with teachers, with staff that have vacation or have the vacation baked into their schedule is like. Why isn't, why aren't those breaks enough? And, and if you could. We can talk later. Cause the, the point is, it's an ongoing conversation, but, uh, why aren't they enough and, and? What would be enough with like vacation and like, again, not to bargain, but like. How many PTO days reasonably? Two more things, I think. The last thing is I heard an ask about future incentives. I know the administration is open. And I am a board member is open to exploring, how do we incentivize? Certain things, but through an equity lens, because you don't wanna penalize somebody who has to use sick leave or has to use their personal tax. So how do we do that? In a appropriate way, in an equitable way. And then. Yeah, that I think. The other thing, the, the mass exodus thing, like what we offer right now is much better than. Any, that, I think, I think, and someone could correct me, what we're offering is not what other districts offer, which has been said. Uh, what, whatever we land on, whether it's keeping this or modifying it or finding a compromise, I still want it to be better than. You know, I still want it to be better than other districts and still leading the way and thinking about that in those terms. Um, but I feel like once we have. Data to talk about what impact we're looking for, that's like just a more detailed discussion. But those are my thoughts.
Can I add one last?
Sure.
Just because I know Allison's been working really hard. I do wanna say, you know, I really appreciate. Uh, some, sometimes stuff gets lost in translation. And if I can say, we've had extensive discussions. Certainly Alice and I, uh, about PTO. And I know that you are coming from a compassionate place and trying to be flexible. And enable success and flexibility. And usage for staff. And I know you're trying to address situations as they arise that aren't. Necessarily reflected in existing rules and trying to sort of figure out what to do. And I think that's really complicated and hard. And can lead to unanticipated like confusion. So for what it's worth, I just wanna say thank you and. And encourage you all to keep, keep that positive mind. I think from what I'm seeing, everybody is in it to win it. Everyone's trying to do right by each other. And I know that. And I believe that. And just wanna encourage everyone to keep that, keep that mindset here as we. Try to figure out a solution that works.
Okay, I don't think there's any further discussion on this. Uh, which means. I really appreciate you guys coming. I mean, we're kind of fun, like. No, 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 not yet. So there's.
How do you untable?
I got one.
Table it to after this discussion was.
Bye, teachers.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
What it should have done is, I, I mean, I should have made motion on here.
We have a motion for, uh, two minute, three minute.
Well, wait, we still have a form, so I'll, I'll make the motion.
No objection. Yeah, there's objections. We'll recess for a few.
Allison, hey, Tab, would you have anything to bring to the bridge?
Oh, I have a diet.
No, 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 don't worry about it. You are awesome. I'll take it.
So, and then.
And then you go to, I know, and then you go to options to do, right? And you don't say that. And then now, the, the, then it's not over, now you have options for three to help. Okay, well, then I guess, well, then I'm looking at this one here. Um, so if someone is. My worry is that. They might, and I, I'm not saying this sort of giving the school board, and it's Allison, it's administrative, because I don't, I hope you guys know. I just, I started to get the idea that, you know, we don't appreciate or excuse. We know that you guys have our.
Okay, so the motion pending is to, uh, approve, um. All of the policies except for employee sick leave as a first reading. And there's a second. So I would just start the discussion by saying.
So it's the motion is approve them and disapprove of three, four, three.
No, you don't have to disapprove.
We just have to address it.
We're not addressed, correct. So I would just say, wha- what, what I'm curious about is, does anybody have like major red flags about? Like, is there anything that would prevent you from wanting to approve any of the other policies as a first reading? Knowing that we have like, like if you've provided, if you put questions into the FAQ, like Allison answered my questions, like are there some outstanding big questions or policies? We should maybe also pull out to talk about now, tonight, or could we possibly? Go through this motion, approve all the first readings. I mean, essentially sort of table, whatever, you know. Without having to actually do that.
Questions in the FAQs, right? So is that good enough?
Yeah, if you get. Did you get?
And I think I, like some of them, I would need to know, like. If there's a language change, you're like, no, I want, like, I wanted to look like the, do you know what I mean? Like, and I don't, that would be a board discussion then, right? Like if, if somebody asked a question in the FAQ and I gave an answer and that person was like, yeah, but I still think it should be X. Right?
That's true. So that's, I guess I'm, okay.
Yeah, oh, I'm so sorry.
No, 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 I'm just one, I'm just trying to think of the most efficient way to do this because we could discuss. I have, I mean, I have the FAQs.
I'm comfortable voting. I mean, I did have some, a couple that raised. A somewhat significant concern, like the one about contagious diseases and. Mental fitness, but you know, I think we could just have that dialogue. I could talk with Allison, she could share on.
The questions, I had like a couple where it was like, maybe it was superintendent approve or support approve, but your response was it didn't totally matter to you.
Yeah.
You were following practice. I feel like you're open.
I just have one thought on sick leave.
On sick leave?
Yes.
The one that we've exempted. Oh, you're right. We're trying, we're thinking about exempting. Correct, okay.
The motion currently.
Yeah, so, right, right. Is that to incentivize people to not take sick days, we could do like a tour, i- if it's within the budget. Obviously, which we, we don't know. Uh, two or three hundred dollar, like stipend if you take two or fewer days.
Oh, that's an interesting idea, like a merit bonus.
Okay, so i- i- it's a carrot in place instead of a stick.
And you know what?
So I just had to think about equity. It's like, what if I have a chronic illness and I?
I don't know. I just don't know. I think it's.
The benefit is the sick leave and.
And if the goal is to address absenteeism, that would be the way to do it.
And it's just, that's just one of the benefits.
I would love to crunch that. I like that thought to crunch, because we looked at it as payout. And if we paid our, every teacher two days, it was like eighty thousand dollars. But if you do something, I don't know, you know what I mean? See if it would be. Reasonable. Sorry.
No, no, I under it too. Um, Lindsay was also open to the idea of payout upon retirement. Cause she said payout every year would be far more difficult.
Which is why we have a policy that we do, because there are people wanting to.
Well, that's a different board.
Retired and then retire earlier in the year with the data crew, uh, leave or otherwise. You know, get this big payout at the end. And there was no limit on it. And, and, and so this is the biggest.
Oh, they were trying to leave the district before the end of the school year, but still be paid through.
So, yeah, or, or you wait, you know, or you get a big cash payout with no limit, you know, at the end of the school year.
You could have like a certain.
Yeah, and you can ask for payback if you leave before you, like, if you're trying to accrue, like, you leave. And you've already used that time or whatever. Like, I think there are ways, there are ways to probably protect. But this, these are part of the discussions we wanna have. Over however much time. So once we have that data, I think that'll be good.
My pushback, my only pushback on the idea of, um, payout for days is that. The argument is they need these days so badly. So then they suddenly don't need them all.
Advocate for yourselves. You have to just advocate strongly. So what else are you gonna?
Be a nice little incentive.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I like that a lot better than, yeah.
But to change the conversation, I think incentive, incentivizing makes sense. The two-day payout, it seems very expensive and it's something that, you know. We s- we would really need to carefully analyze that.
Yeah.
I think I have, I have a lot of questions that arose from that discussion. I don't understand why we don't have professional development paid days for our staff.
Support staff, right?
For a certificated staff, like.
What do you mean?
They, why are they using PTO to go to conferences?
Oh, Michelle mentioned she was going to do research in.
Yeah, that's not, that's her own.
That's her own thing. Actually, I had someone else approach me, said that they take, they have to take PTO to go to. So I think there's just some confusion or there's some need for clarity around how staff can use or access paid time.
Yeah, we have a whole process where they submit what they wanna go to, whatever conference, we approve it, we pay for the conference, the date, like. But I think we've only denied two people, that's because they want, want an airplane somewhere as far away as really expensive.
Okay, so my point is, like some clarification, right?
Even, I wanna talk to the one person who said, I don't get paid if I cover the para.
Yeah.
Cause she should. Like, we have a process for that. If you miss your break or your lunch, you fill out a sheet and you get paid for that time.
So that in the employee handbook? Cause I feel like there's a couple gaps if you play a handbook around.
It's all covering for.
She was saying she was covering the other para or was she saying? Covering the teacher.
Teacher.
Cause that is.
But even if she.
That is not legal.
For up to like twenty-five minutes or something like that. There's a number of minutes.
I guess if she has a substitute license, then it wouldn't be illegal.
But I do wanna look into it because we do have people that.
Okay, okay. So it's nine, ten? Okay, okay, so it's nine, ten?
Is that she was, I would mean that, providing, especially designing this function, but with.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By FBI, but she was still probably over stressed because.
Yeah.
Cause it's stressful, yeah, yeah, cause it's stressful. So I am prepared to vote on the.
Same.
Call it.
I had a couple of questions, oh, I mean, I do have some questions about particular policies. And I'm sorry, but like, so policy thirty two thirty, it has a, a limit of twenty five dollars for a gift?
Yes.
My guess, I just feel like, I had this one, when I was in the North Shore, I received gifts I know are worth more than twenty five dollars, so first of all. Like, who, who even, like, who reports that, like, would thirty five dollars be a more reasonable gift?
I had a lot of questions around.
Yeah, my comment was open to discussion, the work, those amounts should be a bit more, I'm guessing when he said that twenty five is a standard, it's probably like across all districts, like you said, and it's different.
I get it.
It is different here.
Because it also, the policy also says that it should be dependent on where you're located, right?
So, yeah, and it just.
So, I don't, I mean, how closely does that, someone even follow this?
Now I understand why foundation tributes exist, cause I've always given teachers way more than twenty five dollars gift cards, if that's not allowed. I can give it to the foundation as a tribute.
Mm-hmm.
As a much larger amount.
Right.
So that makes a lot more sense to me now, like, it's all kinda coming together.
Well, you're right, I mean, who's really like going to classrooms and seeing what gives teachers stuff?
It's a nice number.
So maybe I'll, like, in the next two weeks, that's something where you could um work with the language or suggestions you can make.
I was gonna say, or, I would, I would change that to like fifty dollars.
There we go.
Because there's a different context where we are, it's different.
Yeah. And then the questions I had raised, like, sort of afterthoughts would be, whatever the limit is, it probably needs to be communicated to families, like, I violated twenty five dollars like a million times.
Right.
In my career as a parent in this system.
Well, in this policy, this policy truly depends on the teacher's self-reporting.
Right.
Which, you know, not that anybody would purposely subvert or hide, but like, you know, like, I think as a teacher, I mean, I, I was honest to God, occasionally, I was like. This probably just got regifted, right, and then I was embarrassed to discover, no, no, it was a very particular expense.
As soon as you say communicate to the families, though, I get this communication, and then I'm like, I have three teachers, I have a speech therapist, I have this, I'm like, I'm expected to spend two hundred and fifty.
No, no more than.
I know, I know. But there are people, but then I don't spend fifty, my teacher's like, we could have spent fifty, I'm like, I have not done the speed limit.
So that was, so I think it's fine, and I don't know that we need to communicate it to families, I think we just communicated to staff, and honestly, they self-report, nobody's going into somebody's classroom to be like, so. What did you get this year, like, that doesn't happen.
I mean.
Well, if you got a good.
I don't know if people are right.
Bad and chocolates or something.
Well, I mean, I have had, I have had people offer to pay a lot of money for things for me.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, so my other question, the other question I had was policy thirty two thirty one. I was concerned that it was a First Amendment issue, because you were saying that it's outside of work. So if I as an employee follow the policy that's in place at my workplace, but professionally I don't fully support it. And in an outside professional organization, I espouse my professional opinion that's not quite the same as my employer. And I do not affiliate myself with my employer, but somebody knows where I work, and it somehow gets back to saying like, well. You know, this person says this, and she works over here.
Yeah, but it, that wouldn't be.
I think, and I had problems with this too, and I asked Steve a lot of questions, because we know there have been situations, and so that's why, I don't know if you saw the link that he shared. Um, yeah. He said, here's an article that might help with the First Amendment question for these policies, but basically what he says is it would have to have like a negative impact. On the district, or be somebody just lying. About the district, and that has a negative impact, so I don't think you could just say like, oh, you were talking about.
So then, could the policy please actually stipulate that there's a negative impact?
I think it's, so, I think it's, I think it does.
Yeah, I thought it.
Adverse harmful effects.
Yeah, you'd have to be like a standard, like a legal standard to prove it.
Thank you, I can't, my iPad won't open the policies when I'm here.
First amendment law is pretty rich in this area, I actually know a lot about it from a handful of years ago. But like, I mean, there are a lot of new references, but like, if you show up with your ID badge on, and you don't take it off. Your employer's gonna be able to gain you. Cause you're effectively by wearing that badge representing.
Well, that's my point, I mean, I've actually been held accountable, the statements that I made as a non-identified MPS, and in fact, I presented statewide and. And had to like, be careful to say like, I work for a large urban district.
Right.
And that's as much as I can say, although, where else would I possibly?
Well, I think you, you'd have, you could just espouse like, uh, maybe I work here, but this does not represent my, like, same way we as school board.
I direct you to the Supreme Court cases.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't putting into language something that was punitive to our staff without good reason.
And I, I, like, I, I understood your feeling, cause I, that was a conversation, it was Steve too, because I was thinking of a certain district, or something didn't happen.
In general, employers do have a significant power to control what employees say.
Right.
About them, and in a form which appears to represent them.
That's my point, but I mean, also like. And then thirty two forty three was the last one in the three thousand series that I really felt. So, it talks about um the direct value of the training or the meeting and that. So, I mean, who decides that, because I feel like that's incredibly, so, in my department, what's an incredibly valuable treat um in service? To, for instance, myself on Friday, was probably not particularly helpful to the vast majority of my department, cause they don't do the job, so that I, they all got trained on something. That unusually pertained only to me, which almost never happens. You know, a lot of them would have argued that it had no direct value, and that they could have spent their time in a different way, so, I see a link. It's not opening, I don't, here we go.
Sorry, so I was just sharing with you the process that we use, and my, I could be wrong, and I can in, look into this more, but I was thinking it was just. Are you talking about like that the district's gonna pay for, or that you're just gonna go to?
That the policy references.
No, I mean, like a professional learning.
I was assuming that it was like internal P.
No, so, I think it's, I thought it was conferences, but I can clarify, because I, so I shared the process we use, so if a ta- a staff member says, I wanna go to this conference. They like fill out the form, tell us how much it costs, tell us how it will directly impact your job. And then at leadership, every meeting, we sit down as a team, cause it might be something that Kelly's staff is really beneficial for, and other people wouldn't know, or, and we all discuss and approve them, we haven't like not approved.
Cause someone who can actually access.
But I can look at. It says professional meeting, it doesn't say conference, right, it says, uh, board encourages opportunities for pro staff members to develop increased competency, yada, yada. Through attendance at professional meetings. For purposes of this policy, a professional meeting shall be defined as, and the one Allison is recommending is. A meeting through which direct value can be derived for the person in attendance for later use in the performance of district duties. The board may reimburse actual and necessary expenses incurred in attending.
And so these are not considered, these are not relevant to like in district meetings, these are specifically conferences.
Professional.
Like, I wanna attend this virtual thing for five hundred dollars, or I wanna go to this conference, or, yeah.
Or, that's the way I'm reading it. If Lindsay, or like Wasbro, or something, like maybe a professional organization that's having some.
I just read meetings to be.
I don't know.
An internal activity.
Because that, cause in my mind, I'm like, I don't know why we'd be approving, approving inter, cause they would all be approved, right, if it's internal stuff. Like, that was my thinking, if it's like meetings we're setting up.
I might put you at kind of the, I think we have something similar, maybe in our handbook to this, and it was, and I, maybe, or. Class, maybe.
Oh.
Yeah. It was like my first rate. I didn't get why people were so like time bound, like with their time, that recorded month. Uh, and I didn't think of anything of it, I didn't, and then everybody wanted to submit a time sheet that went so, what, a half hour, and then maybe like it's further.
That was professional duty, professional.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
This is about expenses though, not salary or compensation. Yeah, so maybe there's some clarity, I actually saw a district who had a policy uh that, or something in their handbook around. Uh, additional duties that are not compensated, like duties that are.
We've done some research.
Well, why, uh, okay, because, and that was really, that was really interesting, because it very clearly spells out what is expected as part of your.
Oh, but be very careful through the equity lens, because it's going to fall heavily on the special education department.
Well, no, I'm not saying to do it, and yeah, I think everything should be better, like the equity lag.
It's all very.
No, I, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I guess I was just. Yeah. Right, but I know what you're saying, that's a different piece.
For sure.
Yeah, like, attending a PTO, or having an emergency event or something like that.
Just a clarity.
Yeah.
Um, okay, what else?
That was in the three thousand series, I think that was really. It.
There are four thousands and six thousand.
So four thousands, we don't really have to review, because.
We'll talk about it when we get there.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, it's just, I just don't wanna get us ahead, um, okay, so, that's just, I don't, is there any more discussion?
No.
All right, then we can take, um, uh, four thousand series? Nope, oh, well, right now, there's. All the three thousands except for a first reading, except for thirty four thirty.
Three thousand, four thousand, six thousand.
All dated for all.
But we can do three thousands and move on, eh.
I didn't hear that, it was for all, I'm sorry, I've been mistaken.
All of them.
Three thousand, four thousand, six thousand.
Stated, I've been mistating.
I.
I said on everything except thirty four thirty two.
I.
Right?
Yeah.
Wait, okay, well then, hold on, hold on, I just wanna make sure that there are no, no large points for discussion then, so please tell us about four thousands.
So I did go through and make notes, because I, obviously, I feel really bad, and I'm sorry, because when I first shared them out, and I said. Three thousands are the same as four thousands, and whatever we approve, like, I didn't say it clearly enough, because I feel bad, cause some of you guys went through and started reviewing the three, four thousand, and then probably realized they were similar. There were some things about like language, like what is Lindsay's title, he's gonna.
Yeah.
Make, fix that, there were a couple things that he hadn't checked in the four thousands, or in the three thousands, he's gonna fix that. Um, but I did make some notes in the four thousand FAQ, so again, I guess we would just say, is there anything like?
So, well, my question was, cause I'm under the impression that the four thousands are identical to the three thousands, is that correct?
That's what Steve said.
Why would we have, to me, it makes no sense to have two redundant policies in two different places that apply the same to all people, like, I think that's gonna get unnecessarily. Confusing and it's inefficient.
So the reason I left it, and it's obviously a board decision, is because he said we could do one or two things, we could separate them, but put them together, I said, right now, they're separate. In our current policies, so let's just keep them separate now.
Ah, so you were tracking what's already there.
Like, right now, we're separate, like in our current old policies, there's two different sections.
But not anything weird.
And the other, no, but the other piece of that too, is that I didn't wanna just bring one and say this is the same for all, like, I wanted you to at least get everybody on both. Do you know what I mean, to see that?
But they are, are they similar, or are they identical?
They're, they're the same, but I'm saying, I wasn't gonna just come and say, hey, you don't need to approve, like, these are gonna.
But it's for sports staff.
Like, I would rather have you see both sets, so that you could see, I'm just saying, there's the history.
So, you know, and.
I'm going to show all the. I got you, I got you.
Yeah, yeah, I did, well, then, I mean, actually, I should amend my motion, right, uh, because uh, PO four, four, three, two is the same to three, four, three, two.
But that's okay, because if you approve them, then I just go to Steve, and I say they want it to be one set of policies, and when they come back as a second reading, it'll be one set. So that's, I think.
No, he's saying that you should also exclude the matching.
Oh.
Yes.
So I would like to, I mean, I guess I. I'm gonna amend my, well, I have my motion out there, I would like to also exclude.
Yeah.
Uh, from uh, four, four, three, two, well, this one wasn't even edited.
Second. That's fine, second, and.
We think he was waiting, he knew we had to discuss it.
Oh, so.
Okay, no objections, so the motion's amended.
Okay.
To also exclude. That other one, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think about that, but you know, what I wanted to say though, is that we do that in a way too, we don't have one policy, and then, you know, can delineate within there, we, we have. Multiple policy numbers that, you know, apply based on classical classification, or, well, it's not multiple, we have some. I know, and we have some, for example, we do two different grievance policies, that are essentially the same thing, but by different classifications.
So you've kept them separate.
Yeah. So, but we can do whatever we want to, maybe now and two weeks from now.
Exactly, I don't, I don't know if I wanna say strike the four thousands right now, cause I mean, identical or similar.
I will clarify with him.
Is different.
So she'll be able to tell me.
And if they're not identical, we can't just say, three thousands move to the.
Well, what you could say is he could consolidate it, so it might be forty policies that are all set, and five that are.
Well, that's a different thing than if.
We can do that at the next thing, it doesn't matter what we do.
Can I? Can we, can we, can I move to amend the motion and just remove the four thousands from this for now?
Sure.
But I, second, cause that's, I'm just re, I'm, it's a second amendment, I can do that. Yeah, you know, yeah, I want, I'm sorry, I jumped to discussion. Because, well, because, oh, okay, you, you can second.
Second it.
Okay, because, well, my, I guess my point is, she didn't fill out the four thousands fully, like, they're not.
Because there are, there are some that you.
We don't know what we're. Well, we would be adopting them on a first reading, is that the benefit of doing that is if. By, by the time we get to the second reading, we decide we wanna have separate policies, including the ones in the four thousand zone. We don't adopt in the first reading today. Let's find out, you can vote it down.
But what?
All, uh, of, of my amendment, because there's a second to my amendment, so, is there any objections to just voting it down? No, we can, we can do it informally, okay, I take it back. We can, we can.
All right.
All right, okay, that's a good point, it is, it is Robert's rule of.
I take it back.
No, I didn't, I didn't draw the motion, I just knew there was no objection to voting it down.
I. Even one of us should get, and I take it back card.
There is no such, there's no certainly amendment.
We're gonna get a jail card, like when you make stupid.
Questions on six thousands.
I have none, they're so technical, I have.
I read it, I mean, I looked at it.
I know, sick, sick.
I saw some notes.
There were some around, um, you had a couple good points, but I think we can talk about them. Nothing that would prevent. Nothing that we need to talk about tonight.
Where you talked about the board presentation.
Yeah.
My thinking is that they're saying that's probably a minimum that it's.
Right, I saw your comment, yeah.
So that's a.
Answers my.
At minimum or something, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I did on sixty three thirty, where it was like, when we're renting, one of the things that has come up is, it seems like we haven't been doing market value analysis on the property rentals, so like. Shouldn't we have language in there discussing the fact that we would expect it to be? If not market value, at least X percentage of market value, like, if we wanted to stop, for some reason, give people a break on the rent.
Hmm. But, yeah, what it currently says is reasonable rental fee.
Well, reasonable feels very subjective to me.
And then, um.
Especially given the fact that apparently our rental fees are.
And then, like you said, are there allowances, because for staff, we just have them cover custodial costs.
Oh, like if you rent a space for.
For a party or something, we don't like do market, you know what I mean, or rental fee, they just cover the cost of having a custodian here for the Saturday or something.
Okay.
So that's interesting, so I didn't conceptualize that, that's the difference at all, I was.
I just wanna point out one thing, and, and the first time we read it. Yeah, I know, I guess it depends what, uh, how I read these things, but first time I read it, I thought, yeah, it makes sense, and we can talk about percent, now I'm wondering if we can adopt it. Sixty two thirty five, I don't wanna make a big deal out of it, but second paragraphs of the board shell, and I mean, I'm perfectly happy doing a first reading today.
Sixty two.
The board shell ensure that adequate fund or reserve for the general fund to maintain a secure financial position whereby the fund head balance. Shall not fall below ten percent of the preceding year's fund tend expenditures.
Yeah, and those are one of the policies that were suggested that we implement or look at, based on sort of where we are.
So this one, they actually, uh, said, hey, go ahead with this, and.
No. Oh, this, no, I'm just saying, I'm saying, um, one of the pieces that we needed to be doing is looking at our financial policies, and that, that we could implement pieces around. Fund balance, notification around fund balance, like, that, those are all policy things that we didn't have in place before, sort of my understanding, and that if we want to, that we can.
I, I'm just, I mean, my, my question is, are we potentially in violation, I mean, it, it's phrase kinda weird, we're by the fund and balance, shall not fall below ten percent. Of the preceding year's fund tend expenditures. Fund and balance shall not fall below ten percent of the preceding year's fund tend expenditures. So if we had the fund ten expenditure one point five million. And we have a policy that says that we have a fund ten balance that shall not exceed ten percent of the expenditures from last year. Were violation of that.
I see what you're saying.
So, so, I'm not opposed to a percent, I didn't think about it at the time, cause I thought it's a good idea. And are we violating the policy?
And it's talking about balance versus expenditures, when it say, is it, so it's not implying that you shouldn't fall below. Uh, i- is it saying that it shouldn't go down, it can't be less than ninety percent of the previous fund balance? Is that what it's saying?
It says specifically, the fund balance shall not fall below ten percent of the preceding year's expenditures.
Well, cause expenditures can be like twenty million and no one has a twenty million fund balance.
I mean, honestly, I, I think that we should per, per reading, we should just.
It says, if during the fiscal year, it appears to the superintendent, the fund balance will be less than estimated, estimated. The superintendent will bring forward for board consideration recommendations that will protect the fund balance, such recommendations shall be in accordance with three part.
So, the point of this is that last year, right, when we were about, like, if that was where we were going, this policy would require. Notification and actions for remedy.
Yep.
That's the most. Percentage is important, and we should look at maybe other districts.
But that was like one thing that, you know, as, as I was looking through them.
I'm wondering if the number just triggers that now I have to. Bring it, right?
Yeah, that's what, and that's the point of that policy.
Yeah.
Well, no, it says less than estimated, not less than ten percent in that last merit.
Change the policy to say, if specifically, if the balance is beaten low, uh, you know, ten percent figure. Uh, then, uh, then the administrator shall bring to the board. To it, if, if it is, it's just guidance, but we never had a specific policy that says you have to be getting X dollars.
Cause this is an important policy to have, so we should, how other districts do it too, just to get a feel for. Thanks for, for rec, I didn't notice that, so I appreciate that. Okay.
I'm ready to.
Anything else?
I have never been new, ready to cut a conversation.
I've seen it. Alright, all in favor of, I'm gonna get this, all in favor of approving. The policy first readings as outlined in the board docs, say four three four three two and four three four two. Um, say aye. So, first readings on those are passed. Uh, we're moving on to a board meeting debrief and feature other topics.
Well done marshaling the cats. Danielle.
This meeting is, uh.
I'm not being, okay.
Four hours and four minutes, four, two minutes, it started by thirty two, this is relatively brisk and. Uh, just fill the air for the next hour, you know. That they would like to share.
I do, thank you for coming, I do appreciate the conversation, I don't know if I'm allowed to debrief.
It was like a tough conversation, there was a lot of stuff we went, and I felt like it. It felt good, like we got a lot, I got a lot of feedback, we listened, I don't know.
And also you have to, well, there are.
Tension and how like the energy was so low in the beginning, I, I don't know how you, like, I don't know what, if that would have been, I could, I thought, I don't know, that was a little.
Yeah, I didn't feel it, I didn't feel it, no.
I didn't either.
It was like the energy was. Guys for being here, I'm, I'm thankful for, for, I think it was important that we made.
I am completely.
I am a phoenix.
We, we need to give everyone in certain cards, the I take it back card, uh. We need to get out of jail, get out of school jail.
Robert's rules can be more informal for us as a board, but we're not gonna do things that are in violation of it, which means we can be more informal, but we, you know.
I take it back, it should be a Robert's rules. Like, uh, what do you call that, it's not a motion, it's like calling a question, right, it's a thing you can do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think, I do think the meeting went pretty well, I also wonder if there could have been. Once we started to understand the enormity of the conversation and the emotion around this particular policy, I just, like, this was so much. To review, and as a newbie who doesn't fully understand, like, the first reading, the second reading, like. I put a lot of time and energy into reviewing those things.
So, good.
Right, I'm just saying, like, and then, and then I felt like conversation was, you guys listened to me and I appreciate that, but I'm like. Like, then what, like, are we sure that we're making the changes for the next reading? That kind of.
So, right, so we'll get, that is, when it's time for a second reading, you will get, well, I can talk to you about that offline, about how, about the process.
But typically, what I do before the second reading is I go back to all those and say like, I changed this, or I edited that, or I, you know what, so you can see.
And if they're.
Yeah.
The first reading is almost a formality. But it's nice to have this opportunity to, to front load questions to Alison.
I also, I would just kind of point out two things, one is, and, yeah, I mean, in my mind, it's. I, I think I try and push people a little bit much, a little bit faster than I normally would, but there's so many of them and, you know. Um, I think the Neola's worked better, I think, and easier than perhaps, uh, a lot of things. And I wish that that was something that, you know, right, it feels like it's a little bit easier.
And we can come back to it again.
And then outside of this meeting, I need to talk to somebody, cause the iPad is not working for me, like.
Does anybody else feel like they wanna swap the iPad for a phone book?
My iPad.